In three, two, one.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order, and clerk, if you could please call the roll, thank you.
Kemp?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
White?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And I'll be the first to say this morning, others might say it as well, go box, although they went and they went, they did a great job, tremendous accomplishment. And, you know, I think two littles said about the defensive team and the, the coaching staff as well, in recognizing that solid, solid flawless effort at the Super Bowl. Tremendous accomplishment by our home team winning. And we're going to start this morning with a pledge and an invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if you're able to, I'll ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you'll guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. I give thanks and ask for blessings for our agricultural industry and some of the outstanding youth in our community that will be recognized this morning. And as always, Lord, I give thanks and ask for blessings for members of our first, of our armed forces and our first responders. Pray that you'll keep them, keep them safe and guide them each and every day. I give all these thanks and ask for all these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And we will present two recognitions today. The recipients are joining us virtually. The first recognition will be presented by Commissioner White. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And as you can see, I'm wearing my special strawberry tie this morning that was presented to me by leadership of the Florida Strawberry Festival a few years back.
Can I claim my red jacket?
That's right. Madam Chair has the red jacket on, and that, that signals what time of year it is. And things are a little different this year because of COVID-19. I always enjoy having my friends from Plant City and the Strawberry Festival out here in person, but so thankful that we're able to have you at least logged on virtually here today for this recognition. I think I see Florida Strawberry Festival President Paul Davis and Chairman Doug McGinnis and the Florida Strawberry Festival Queen First Maid and court members with us this morning. We're so happy and so thankful to have you with us here this morning. You know, the Florida Strawberry Festival's a lot of fun with the, the fair food and the rides and everything, but it's about so much more than that, though. We have kids out there that have worked hard preparing various projects for the festival, whether that's raising an animal, or, or caring for a plant, or some other project. And certainly, these young ladies here today that will gain much valuable experiences, ambassadors for the Florida Strawberry Festival and the industry and the city of Plant City this morning. So, so I encourage you to support the festival this year and, and get out to the festival. And this is a very special time of year, a sweet time, you may say. And in just a few weeks, we'll celebrate the bountiful strawberry crop and all its history and economic impact in Hillsborough County. Mr. Davis, I want to commend you and the Board of Directors for your hard work and perseverance this year. I'm sure it's been a challenge, but your hard work has allowed us to continue to honor this tradition. I want to thank everyone involved in the Strawberry Festival for giving the public a chance to again enjoy this signature event this spring. I'd also like to recognize these young ladies that are here with us today. Florida Strawberry Festival Queen McKenna Jordan, First Maid Avery Surancy, and court members Kellyanne Kirkland, Bryn Murphy, and Kate Turner. You all are wonderful ambassadors for the Florida Strawberry Festival, and congratulations to each one of you on your achievements. Now, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I am proud to present this proclamation. We always have a copy made for each court member. I think those have been delivered to you this year since you're with us here virtually, and I'd like to read it into the record at this time. It reads, whereas Plant City is the winter strawberry capital of the world, with more than 11,000 acres of strawberries planted in the area annually, and Hillsborough County produces about 15% of the nation's strawberries. And whereas, since 1930, the Florida Strawberry Festival has united the community by bringing people together to honor farmers and celebrate the bountiful strawberry harvest, which has an annual economic impact of more than $800 million. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival entertains and draws residents, as well as visitors from around the world, introducing them to Plant City agriculture, arts, businesses, horticulture, and industry. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival Board of Directors Chairman W. D. Doug McGinnis, President Paul Davis, and many local volunteers and civic organizations have devoted countless hours to the success of this event. And whereas, the Florida Strawberry Festival has been named the number one fair or festival in Florida for three years in a row, as well as one of the top 35 events in all of North America. And whereas, 2021 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen McKenna Jordan, First Maid Avery Surancy, and court members Kellyanne Kirkland, Bryn Murphy, and Kate Turner serve as the event's goodwill ambassadors. And whereas, the theme "All Aboard" was selected to mark this year's 86th event, reflecting the festival's enthusiasm for togetherness, unifying vendors, organizations, corporate partners, and exhibitors who create parade floats and displays, and encouraging everyone to enjoy a ride on the Berry Fest Express. And now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare March 4th through March 14th, 2021, as Florida Strawberry Festival Days in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the festival's rich heritage and enjoy the strawberry harvest that contributes so much to the community and the region, executed this 17th day of February 2021, of course, signed by all seven of the commissioners. And at this point, Mr. Davis and/or Mr. McGinnis, I'd like to see if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you all for letting us be here this morning. We're, we're proud of you, girl. We're proud of what we've done. We've got a 14, 15-page protocol. I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank Dr. Holt, the Health Department Director. He has been this absolute goal, helping us come up with plans. And as you know, we're different this year. We don't have our main stage entertainment, but what we have done is we've added on-ground entertainment, which is free with your paying interest. And let me just say, we've made sure that everything is social distance. We're, we're really going over and above to get this done. So, this 12 or 13-page protocol, it's written, every area has rules on how to keep it safe. Our Chairman Doug McGinnis came up with an idea that really would help us make this happen. So, I would like to give him one second just to talk about that. But since I won't be talking again, thank you so much for this this morning. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul. It is an honor and a pleasure, again, to be before the county commissioner. We appreciate this and the proclamation. We, you can have a plan as far as COVID, et cetera, and we've got detailed plans, as Paul said, but we have instituted a COVID compliance committee. We have a physician on board, we have a risk manager, a major company involved, and other people representing different parts of the festival. So, during the festival, we will be sure that the plan is worked properly. So, we want everybody to have a wonderful time and a safe time while they're at the festival. So, all aboard. I'd like to turn it over to Queen McKenna at this point.
On behalf of our board and myself, we welcome the Florida Strawberry Festival this year. We're so blessed to have a festival this year. I'm very excited to be able to see this year's vendors and the local inhabitants. And to be a part of such a different and unique festival this year. We hope to see you at the festival March 4th through 42.
Well, thank you very much. And again, congratulations to these five, five young ladies. They've done a tremendous job in achieving the positions that they're in today. And I will most definitely be seeing you at the Strawberry Festival. Thanks again.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Commissioner White. I will present the next proclamation is Development Specialist Sue Bedry and Manager Jody Pushkin of the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program.
I think Overman may be trying to get your attention.
Here today?
I'm here. This is Sue Bedry.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'll recognize, I'm sorry, I'll recognize before we do this, Commissioner Overman, did you want to speak to the Strawberry Festival?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I am, one, I'm wearing my strawberry earrings because, you know, we want to make sure we're doing that as well as my Super Bowl pins. So, we're, we're excited about being able to celebrate all the wonderful things that occur in our community that are so critical to our economic success. And I am so happy to hear and impressed with the safe and sound procedures that the Strawberry Festival has put into place to make sure that people can go there and have a wonderful time. The Strawberry Festival is one of my most favorite events. And I just, I look forward to the parade, and I look forward to the folks coming out and celebrating a staple in our diet, in our household. Strawberries are critical, like daily experience for, for my family. And I just want to thank the industry as a whole for fighting so hard, creating the jobs, and providing a rich resource, not only for our, our diets, but also to our community in terms of the economics that it brings to our community. And thank you very much, Commissioner White, for bringing this forward as we celebrate this each year. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. I always look forward to the strawberry shortcake and strawberry salads. But we'll go back here and thank you again, Commissioner White. And I'll present the next proclamation. And we'll ask again is Development Specialist Sue Bedry and Manager Jody Pushkin from the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program here today. Let's see. I see you both. Yes, thank you. And the Newspaper in Education Program, also known as NIE, provides newspapers, companion materials, and instructional support to schools and families. I have to say, I think, needed more than ever in this time of, I think we are all in need of, or look to, civic and public education. And I came from a household where both my parents, I grew up in Washington DC, and they read the paper from end to end. My father would get up at 5:00 in the morning to do it before work. So, it's a tradition. My mother's 95 now, and I think that that is her biggest joy every day, believe it or not. Its mission is to secure the newspaper's place in an important component of lifelong education. And the results have been amazing for the Newspaper in Education Program. During the 2019, 2020 school year, NIE has provided 1.1 million print copies and digital editions of the Tampa Bay Times to classrooms across the Tampa Bay region. Additionally, NIE has produced 12 original educational publications, two of which won national awards from the National Newspaper Association in education programs, in National Newspaper Association. This is an incredible milestone for the Newspaper in Education Program's hard work and achievements. I will present Ms. Bedry and Ms. Pushkin this proclamation, recognizing Newspaper in Education Week. And I think the proclamation's been, been delivered, I'm, I believe. It reads, whereas research shows that the most effective way to help children discover the joys of reading and become lifelong learners is to get them involved at an early age and encourage them to read often. And whereas, reading dramatically improves children's vocabulary comprehension and writing skills, leading to greater success in their academic and professional careers. And whereas, students who learn through newspapers become lifelong readers, in addition to being informed and engaged in local, state, and national current events. And whereas, newspapers in education is an international program that encourages students from primary through adult education levels to use daily news, daily, the daily newspaper as a valuable learning resource. And whereas, more than 40 years, for 40 years, the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program has partnered with Hillsborough County to serve educators, students, and families. And whereas, a collaborative effort provides print and digital newspapers, award-winning educational publications, teachers' guides, lessons, plans, educator workshops, and additional resources, all at no cost to schools, teachers, or families. And whereas, the American Press Institute commemorates and celebrates Newspaper in Education Week annually during the first week of March. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare March 1st through March 5th, 2021, as Newspaper in Education Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages parents, students, and teachers to read the newspaper daily in school and at home to inform, enhance, and enrich their lives, executed this 17th day of February 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. And Ms. Bedry or Ms. Pushkin, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, commissioners. My name is Jody Pushkin. I'm the manager of the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program. For decades, the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program, otherwise known as NIE, has provided informational text to Hillsborough County teachers, students, and parents in the form of daily newspapers and our award-winning, winning curricula in both print and digital formats. The goal of NIE is to build future lifelong readers, productive citizens, consumers, and critical thinkers. Reading every day is imperative for all people, especially children. Reading increases vocabulary, writing skills, and knowledge of the world around us. Newspapers add a dynamic dimension to all subjects, from language arts, to math, to social studies, to business, to science, and everything in between. Statistically, people who read the newspaper are more engaged citizens. The Tampa Bay Times provides readers with a living textbook, which is a great resource for students to practice higher-order comprehensive skills. At the present time, we provide more than 174,560 copies of the newspaper weekly in print and digital formats at no charge to the school district, schools, teachers, or families in Hillsborough County. In addition, the Times provides original standards-based curriculum in print and digital formats for teachers in all subjects and all grade levels. We are proud of our partnerships with Hillsborough County, including the Tampa Hillsborough Public Library System and Hillsborough County Waste Management Program, and our partnership with Hillsborough County Schools. Thousands of teachers throughout Florida use daily and weekly newspapers to enhance their classroom lessons. Teachers utilize newspaper activities to promote learning, support Florida benchmarks and expectations, plus have fun interpreting photos, advertisements, cartoons, and headlines. On behalf of myself, Sue Bedry, and the rest of the Tampa Bay Times, we appreciate the support of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners in commemorating Newspaper in Education Week.
Great. Thank you so much. And very much appreciate everything the Tampa Bay Times does. Newspaper in Education Week is, is to recognize that effort, and it's such a, as you've educated us this morning, such a great and important effort. So, thank you so much. And we'll move on at this time. I want to thank all of our recipients for joining us today and for everything you do to help make Hillsborough County the best county in Florida, I'll say in the nation. And we'll now go to approval of the changes to the agenda. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, commissioners. We have one item off the agenda, which is Commissioner Hagan's item, item F4. At 11:30 is to direct the administrator to bring back a report on the cybersecurity assessment that the county conducted last year and the status of the action plan. We have one item, item A17, that has been deferred to March 3rd, which is the Board Policy Regarding the Leasing of County Real Estate. At 10 o'clock, we have the second of two required public hearings, item D1, to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Homes by West Bay LLC for the Hinton-Hawke Stone subdivision. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing and approve the final assessment resolution, an assessment role to create water and wastewater impact fee assessment unit 21101. At 10:15 AM, we have item E1, which is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. Item G1 at 10:45 is to receive a report regarding a creation of Hillsborough County Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment Program, ACE. It's related to item G2, but it is separate and apart and not contingent upon G2. Item G2 at 11:00 AM is to receive a report from the county administration and the county attorney's office regarding creation of a program to establish apprentice participation requirements, once again, related to G1, but it is separate and apart and not contingent upon G1. Item F2 at 11:15 is to receive a presentation by Sarah Couture of the Fines and Fees Justice Center regarding Florida's fines and fee structure. This is Commissioner Overman's item. And item F4 at 11:30, Commissioner Hagan's item, is to direct the administrator to bring back a report on the cybersecurity assessment and the action plan generated. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Overman. If we could take a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And I understand we have Commissioner Overman has a request pursuant to Rule 13 of the Board's Rules of Order to consider additional materials. This will require a supermajority vote, according to our rules. And I'll let Commissioner Overman describe her request, and then I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and thank you very much. As, as you know, on the agenda is to address the Tenet Bill of Rights, and that document is in the process of being considered and then set hearing for later today. In addition to that, I've done some research regarding a similar piece of legislation associated with, let's say, incorporated in their language. And with that, it was a discussion regarding notice of fees or late fees to the tenants. I have that full document for consideration, and that information is going out to the commissioners for consideration in this document, which would ultimately be discussed at the hearing. But I will, I'll describe that in length when we get to that item, but I would like to have it considered today as part of this process.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. So, with that explanation, can we have a roll call? I guess.
Move to waive the rules. Is that what you're looking for?
Yep. Move to waive.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, move to waive the rules. Commissioner Cohen, seconded. And with that, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And.
Thank you.
We'll move now to public comments. Sometimes I think this statement is longer than the public comments, but the Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to board members. However, it's requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at issues. This provides a mutual respect between board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda, which we're at now for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information's being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The chair will call on speakers by name of an order in which they have completed their online public comment form. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the chair. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on a scheduled agenda item will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your name. Thank you. And we'll call first on Samantha Toretzky. Do we have Samantha?
Good morning, commissioners. Samantha is not on the line.
Okay. We'll move to Eric Garduno.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Eric Garduno, the Government Affairs Director for the Bay Area Apartment Association, which represents apartment communities in the greater Tampa Bay region and frontline essential workers that staff these communities. I want to focus my comments on Agenda Item B1 and two main aspects of the proposed ordinance, the renters' notice and evaluate, elevation, sorry, of source of income to a protected class. We support providing renters a notice of rights and responsibilities. We would also ask that minor changes be made to facilitate compliance, for instance, requiring signed acknowledgement of receipt of the notice by current residents, leaves compliance in the hands of residents, who may or may not be willing to provide the required signature. We suggest that this requirement only be included as part of any new leases or lease renewals going forward. There are other minor changes in this nature that we'd also ask you to consider. On the second issue, elevating source of income to protected class, there are challenges with both the mechanics and policy that is proposed. As housing providers, there are a limited number of factors that we could use to evaluate prospective residents. One is their income. In this case, we look for income to be both verifiable and regular. Many of our members routinely encounter fake pay stubs and other fraudulent income documentation. Regulating what we are required to evaluate in this category without putting appropriate guardrails can invite more fraud, could also lead to people obtaining apartments who can't actually afford them, particularly if we are now required to consider one-time payments by gifts. Overall, we fear this policy choice will lead to several unintended consequences that will undermine the goals you're looking to achieve, particularly as it relates to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. As housing providers, we work with the program, but it's difficult and complex at best. And we hope to meet with each of you to share experiences in this regards. In sum, though, it adds layers of administrative burden and costs that are not recouped through the program, which ultimately impact affordability. Frustrations with the program's processes has led many housing providers to leave the program. This is not to knock the Tampa Housing Authority, which administers the program. They have hard-working, dedicated staff that give 110% every day. Some of the issues that they have to deal with are required at the federal level. Despite these challenges, though, Tampa Housing Authority has been able to maintain an impressive 98% utilization rate. That means 98% of all voucher holders have housing today. For the 2% that don't, we think this policy will make their struggles worse. Voucher holders will likely apply to more places, but because they don't meet rental qualifications or because the housing authority isn't able to meet the rent that's required, they'll be denied and won't have housing. Their, their efforts will be frustrating, and they'll have wasted time and energy and money in the process. We think there are ways to improve the process, though, that can be done here at the local level. We offer as an alternative our commitment to work with the housing authority, explore these possibilities.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Sir, sir, your time is up. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Stephanie Ingram? Is Stephanie Ingram available?
Good morning, commissioner. I do not see Stephanie on the line.
Thank you. And we'll move now to Chenivia Smith. Is Chenivia Smith available? Is Chenavia Smith available?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners and staff. I am Chenavia Smith of Laborers International Union of North America, and I value that the Commission is expecting and expecting the various paths to make this work for the residents. However, what will be concluded is that the incentive-based programs don't work. I do, however, advocate that an actual ordinance be put in place that is substantive and also meets the strict and very needed standards of apprenticeship under the Department of Florida Apprenticeship. I do want to thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for your hard work in advancing this. Also, Commissioner Myers, thank you for creating a great direct pathway for those interested to be gainfully employed, to have an opportunity to access, participate, and an exemplary mentorship, to have residents being represented, heard, and active in the technological fields, and more. Without exclusion, I also appreciate the rest of the body of the Commission's Board to have collaborative work being done and access all support for creating a better tomorrow today for the residents of Tampa, be supported with these efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We'll go next to Kenneth Williams.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mr. Williams did not check in today.
Okay, thank you. We'll move next to Jim Janeco.
Yes, good morning. Hi, Commissioners, and good morning, Chair Kemp. My name is Jim Janeco, and I would like to speak regarding the creation of a countywide apprenticeship ordinance. And first, I'd like to express my gratitude to Chair Kemp for her leadership. As an advocate for registered apprenticeship in construction, it is urgent that we address the shortage of skilled workers and the aging workforce in the industry. All around the nation and here in Hillsborough County, we face a drastic shortage of next-generation construction workers, and it can be dangerous jobs. We need to invest in our community to provide not only lifelong career opportunities for those who will pursue careers in construction, but also, we need to invest in training those workers and educating those workers correctly. Creating an apprenticeship ordinance that will require the use of state-registered apprentices on certain county-funded projects is the way to create this pathway to the middle class for the next generation of Hillsborough County residents. I realize the Commission may be considering several ordinances and policies from around the state, and I believe that you will find that in order to be successful, what must be passed is an actual ordinance rather than just a policy like the one that exists in Palm Beach, which is only incentive-based and, for that reason, is not being utilized and is not effective in creating job opportunities for residents. Right now, the city of Tampa is close to advancing its own apprenticeship ordinance, and this is the best model from those that exist around the state. The state of Florida has a strict standard and definition for apprentices and apprenticeship. The program must be registered with the Department of Education and combine academic requirements with on-the-job training requirements. We must hold our own apprenticeship requirements here in Hillsborough County to those same strict standards. And if we're truly going to invest in our community, let's do it right. Let's pass a really good substantive apprenticeship ordinance that requires bona fide state-registered apprentices. I know that this county commission will pass an incredible ordinance. Additionally, I commend Commissioner Myers for her efforts to create a training program for workers in hospitality and technology. While my focus is on advocating for registered state apprenticeships in construction, a rising tide lifts all boats. Workers in these popular fields of hospitality and technology deserve educational and training opportunities and the dignity that comes along with a rewarding career. I'm proud to see the steps that this commission is taking to invest in our residents. Thank you to each of you, particularly thank you to Chairperson Kemp for your leadership in creating a state-registered apprenticeship ordinance here in Hillsborough County. Look forward to working with you along the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Steve Kona?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Steve Kona, President and CEO of Associated Builders and Contractors. ABC is one of the largest construction associations in the state of Florida, representing roughly 2,000 construction firms statewide and over 480 local construction firms here in our region. ABC is also one of the largest providers of registered apprenticeship training in the region. We are training over 500 apprentices in eight different construction trades. Today, we are here to support Commissioner Myers' Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment, or ACE, program. We believe this is a very innovative program that will bring together the public sector and private businesses to create more meaningful career development education to our community. ABC and our member firms intend to be partners to help promote and train anyone who wants a career in the construction industry. We believe this is the type of innovative approach that is much more effective to grow apprenticeship programs than any potential unworkable apprenticeship mandates that are tied to construction procurement. We'd like to thank Commissioner Myers for bringing this innovative program forward. And that's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kenneth Williams, I have you down here a second time, so I may as well call, or you, and see if he's present?
No, Madam Chair, Kenneth did not check in.
Thank you. Jim Janeco? I also have you down a second time, I realize, so, but I didn't know if you wanted to speak any, to, you have it for two different issues. But it seems like you covered them both.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. I did, there was a little bit of confusion on the county website, on the drop-down menu, but I support your initiative for a state-registered apprenticeship ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean McDonald?
Good morning, Madam Chair Kemp, and fellow Commissioners. My name is Sean McDonald, Journeyman Warmer, first and foremost, as well as President of the West Central Florida Labor Council and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 915 Tampa. First off, I want to thank Madam Chair Kemp, the other Commissioners and staff for all the work in moving forward with Agenda Item G2, the creation of apprenticeship participation requirement. We all know the importance of education and training, especially in an occupation where, according to the National Center for Construction, Education, and Research, by the year 2031, 41% of the current workforce will be retired. If you couple replenishing and depleting workforce with what individual gains from the State of Florida Department of Education-approved apprenticeship program, which is the knowledge and skills that will last a lifetime, this is going to be a great program. I've looked at the other models presented and can say through experience, if it is incentive-based, there will be no, little or no participation, and I don't believe anybody here wants to draft something that will garner no participation. Instead, by establishing a requirement, it would create an opportunity for a contractor that is maybe not investing in the human capital of the labor force of Hillsborough County, the incentive, if you will, to get involved in an apprenticeship program, and thus, the opportunity to bid on work funded by Hillsborough County. I feel the city of Tampa draft ordinance takes the best attributes of the other ordinances and puts it all together. For example, it includes the important definitions, a reasonable threshold, has strong good-faith language, as well as enforcement tools. I, myself, am the product of a Florida Department of Education-approved apprenticeship program, where the standard is 8,000 hours of on-the-job training, along with a minimum of 144 hours of classroom time per year. And I can tell you from personal experience that it has opened up more doors for me and been less of a financial burden than my bachelor's degree has ever been. The preemptive bills referred to in the report are nothing new, by the way. Similar bills have been introduced in years past, and have failed. We are aware of them, and we are involved. So I ask you, please, don't let that be a deterrent. So in closing, by developing this program, this commission will be addressing the skilled labor shortage while, at the same time, assisting these apprentices in getting the skills and hours needed to complete their apprenticeship and help train the next generation of construction workers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Timothy Bianco?
Hello, and good morning, fellow Commissioners, and thank you, Chair Kemp, for all the work you've done. I'm here to speak on my experience of the apprenticeship. Five years ago, I started the apprenticeship, and day one, we were trained in CPR and certified before we ever stepped on the job. Casey has been the key component to this training, day one, all the way to the very last day. I finished my training in April of last year, and at that moment, doors I never imagined opened. I purchased a house, I've had another child, and I, I just feel a sense of freedom that I've never felt ever in my life. This apprenticeship program is the most strict curriculum that I've ever been part of. I've been in the unit of military, and the curriculum, along with the mentorship of fellow journeymen on-the-job training, is far and away the best thing I've ever been involved in. I have to be the push forward on this issue because I believe it's going to open up opportunities for people coming out of high school that aren't, aren't really looking for the college education, they want to get into a construction, a hands-on trade or something. And the apprenticeship offers a safe way to do it. I understand the constructive industry has a high rate of injury and death, and I've never been a part of it or seen any of it since joining this apprenticeship. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a good day.
Thank you. And with that, I have called all the names that I have here this morning. I'll do one more to the two speakers who didn't appear. Samantha Toretzky? And Stephanie?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Samantha and Kenneth have still not checked in.
Okay, and did you say Stephanie Ingram has not checked in?
I apologize. Yes, Stephanie has not called back in yet either.
Thank you. So it looks like we have exhausted our list, but for the public hearings coming later. So we will close public comment now, and we can move to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, and I heard a few things there, but I'll do Commissioner White and Commissioner Overman second, and can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you noted, we have a little bit of time before our 10 o'clock public hearings, so we can move to Item B1 on the regular agenda, which is Commissioner Overman's item regarding the Renters' Bill of Rights. I did want to note that Commissioner Hagan did ask us to look into seeing if there was potential benefit on a residential rental registry, and that staff is still looking into that pursuant to the memo that is attached to the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. So Commissioner Overman, you're recognized? Is that it, or do we want, do we have a report back from staff on this, or?
I can have Nancy Takamori introduce it, if you like.
Okay.
Nancy, can you please introduce the topic, and then they can take board discussion?
Absolutely. Good morning, Nancy Takamori with the County Attorney's Office. The agenda item before you today seeks authorization to advertise and set the public hearing for March 3, 2021, at 10 a.m. on a Renters' Bill of Rights and Anti-Source-of-Income Discrimination Ordinance. The draft ordinance that's in your backup does two things. There's the third component that Commissioner Overman added with respect to the notice of late fees, but that's obviously not in your backup yet. So I'll speak to the two, two parts that are in your backup. So first, the ordinance requires landlords to provide residential tenants with a required notice of rights and resources. And second, it prohibits landlords from discriminating against tenants in residential rental housing based on lawful source of income. I'll give you a brief overview of both of the parts of the ordinance, and then a few additions based on some feedback that we recently received. The first part of the ordinance, which requires landlords to give tenants the required notice of rights and resources, that notice of rights and resources is included in draft in your backup and would be a document that the Board would approve. As the ordinance is currently drafted, the notice of rights has to be given to both new and existing tenants. We are going to, based on some discussions we had with Commissioner Overman, a Spanish-language version of the notice of rights would be available, and we're working with Communications on that right now. The second part of the ordinance prohibits landlords from discriminating against residential tenants or prospective tenants based on lawful source of income. Lawful source of income means a tenant's income from a legal job or profession, from Section 8 vouchers, Social Security, gift income, retirement benefits, other governmental assistance, and the like. And then after some feedback we received, we will include in that definition trust income and investment income, and any absent or direction to the contrary, that'll be included in any subsequent drafts of the ordinance. Both parts of the ordinance are proposed to be enforced by code enforcement and consumer and veteran affairs by civil citations. We recommended an effective date of March 15, but a grace period essentially, so no penalties would be assessed until July 1, and that would give us an opportunity to educate both landlords and tenants. So I'm available for questions, as is staff, and again, any subsequent draft would include the changes that I mentioned this morning, and unless the Board directs otherwise, also the notice of late fees. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to, I see there's some hands up, but I'll go to Commissioner Overman first at this point.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. And thank you, Commissioners, for advancing this important ordinance forward. I'm grateful that we can have this discussion today. Similar ordinances have been passed locally in St. Petersburg and across the state in Broward and Miami Gate Counties. Word has gotten out that Hillsborough County is a great place to live, work, and play. And Tampa Bay is not only winning in the sports field, but is also a desirable place to live. And we all know there is a rental housing shortage as our population continues to grow. The ordinance, as presented, requires, one, notice to residents of their rights and resources for tenant assistance. It prohibits landlords from discriminating against tenants based on a tenant's lawful source of income, restating protected-class language already in the state and federal law. And with the language submitted to you this morning, please accept my apologies for not including to your board package number three, the required to notice tenants and assessment of late fees, which I can give you some draft language to consider if that becomes a discussion point for consideration. Written and, written notice of the elements of this ordinance is key to informing and educating tenants, and I'm very happy to see included, seeing that included in the ordinance. Without this ordinance, many are flat-out prohibited from applying strictly on their source of income. I know other Commissioners may have been contacted by individuals who have concerns. However, this ordinance does not prohibit landlords from setting reasonable tenant selection criteria, including financial and credit qualifications, which must be applied equally to all tenants. Importantly, communication is key. I understand our wonderful communications department has been talking with, with staff so that they can be ready for a robust communications plan, ensuring that residents and landlords have access to the facts of what this ordinance does and what it doesn't do. Many of the misconceptions that this is solely about protecting Section 8 voucher holders, it's much more than that. It's about veterans who qualify for Veterans Affairs supportive housing. It's about residents who are struggling due to the pandemic and are receiving rental assistance. It's about seniors living on fixed income. It's about disabled residents living on the proceeds of a qualified disability trust. This ordinance is a great opportunity to reinforce who we are and what we stand for as a community. The ordinance will prohibit discrimination due to the source of income, and I believe is a sound policy. And I will ask the Chair to make the motion, but I do, would like to make sure that we address the issue associated with the, the fees issue, as that needs to be discussed by the Board in order to move forward. as that needs to be discussed by the board in order to move forward to set the hearing in March. I'll stop there.
Thank you. So you have a motion now to approve?
Therefore, I would move to authorize the County Attorney's Office to schedule and advertise a public hearing for March 3, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. to consider adopting an ordinance as submitted in the backup with the additional language legal will incorporate into the title of the advertisement.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And I know Commissioner White, you've had your hand raised. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know at the last meeting, the sense of urgency may have been, may have, I don't know for sure, I stress, may have been driven by the impending sunset of the eviction moratorium. I know that has now been extended to June 30, as I understand it. I also understand that there are some concerns from folks in the industry, the apartment industry. I would just like to see staff have a little bit more time to continue to tweak the language in this draft ordinance. Certainly, I think there's a chance to get the industry on board and have a product here that can move forward with everyone in agreement. So, you know, I personally would like to see this item deferred to the March 3 meeting, to not schedule the public hearing at this point, but to just take the item as it stands today, defer it to March 3, give staff just a little bit more time to work with Commissioner Overman and her staff, provide some tweaks, and continue to work with and hear from the industry. I don't know that I'm going to make a motion for deferral at this point. I'd like to hear how some of the other Commissioners feel. And as the conversation continues, if I feel like a majority would be willing to do that, then I may ask to be recognized to make that motion, but certainly like to hear everyone's thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I think the situation is urgent for people suffering in this economic downturn that many families are going through right now. And I think if you've got a baby on your hip and you're living in your car and you've got rental, you qualify for rental assistance in one form or another, as mentioned by Commissioner Overman, whether it's Veterans Assistance or Section 8 vouchers or the other rental assistance programs. The situation is urgent. If you're running into apartments that are offered for rent but not offered for you or not available to you, where the landlords are allowed in our county currently to discriminate against people who are only able to pay with rental assistance vouchers. These people are having an especially difficult time finding affordable housing because landlords are not required to accept their vouchers. And in fact, they're allowed in our county to blatantly discriminate against citizens who are in these low-income situations, including working poor, working families who have gotten in trouble during this pandemic. Often, the newspaper ads for rental apartments will even say, "No, we do not participate in Section 8 or any voucher programs." A landlord can put a sign in the window saying "for rent," but no vouchers accepted, no Section 8. And just as landlords cannot turn people away based on race, religion, or gender, we should prevent discriminatory advertising and attempts to steer people away from housing in certain areas or what have you based on the lawful source of income. We need to put an end to this discrimination, and I'm ready to move forward with that today. It's an important way. We can assist struggling households seeking to avoid homelessness. We're talking about people who are struggling financially but fully capable of paying their rent with vouchers. And I believe discriminating against these people will prove to be on the wrong side of history soon. Ordinances that prohibit discrimination based on lawful source of income, including vouchers, have been adopted in Miami Dade County in 2009 and Broward County in 2017. Whole states have adopted these types of ordinances. So it's a workable solution that can augment our county's other commendable efforts. This county is making great strides, working hard, making good progress towards helping low-income families find affordable housing. We're working to provide affordable housing. We're working to help keep families in their homes during this particularly difficult time. We have recently passed a resolution acknowledging racism as a public health crisis. And in that context, our county, I think, should be making the next step. I think we have a moral obligation to pass this Tenant Bill of Rights, including the source of income protection. I think, you know, moving forward with the public hearing on March 3 gives us ample opportunity, hopefully it will give some citizen advocates on all sides an opportunity to continue discussing this issue with our offices and providing input as we move forward. But I'm prepared to move forward today, and I am grateful to Commissioner Overman for including this part in this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So a question for the County Attorney, first of all, because when we voted, I believe, at our last meeting about, it wasn't to hold off on this until March 3, but it was to make sure that we had through March 3 to get it right. And what I want to know is if we set the public hearing today for March 3, doesn't that effectively tie us to the details that we decide on today and make it impossible for the types of tweaks that I think many of us might think may be necessary to get it perfect or as close to perfect as we can?
Yes, Commissioner, Christine Beck, County Attorney. You're correct. There, you know, you cannot make material changes once it's advertised, but you can make changes that aren't material. So it kind of turns on how big the change is and whether the notice, it all comes down to whether the notice was sufficient to put the public on notice of what was happening with the ordinance. And so it's hard to give you a more specific answer without knowing exactly what the change to the ordinance is. But did that answer your question?
Well, yeah. I mean, my concern is that we voted to make sure we had another two weeks to get this right. And I'm afraid, one thing I'm concerned about is that we'll be boxed into certain details today that might compromise the ability to do that. I am in support of this. I think this is a really great effort. I applaud Commissioner Overman for bringing this forward. But my basic concern is that I'm not sure that what applies to a person that, say, rents one apartment on their property versus someone that, you know, maybe operates thousands of rental units, there are differences in the way that these businesses operate. And I just think with something as broad as this, there may be unintended consequences as a result of some of it. Let me just give an example of something. The question of whether or not a landlord is going to be required to immediately meet with every single tenant that they have within a specified timeframe, or are they going to do it with all new tenants and as tenancies come up for renewal? I mean, I just think that's a discussion item, for example, the type of detail that we might want to give some thought to. That's my, my only concern is that if we set it today, whatever the parameters are that we set are going to be sort of set in stone. And I just, that's what I thought was the reason for, not a huge delay, but a short delay to sort of get some of this right. I know that many of us have heard from different people over the course of the past week. And most of what I've heard is not any, it wasn't anybody that was against it. It was more, you know, concern over this provision, how is this going to be interpreted, just to make sure that we've sort of thought through it from all angles. So that's just what I wanted to add to the discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate the comments and the support. One of the processes that will evolve out of this, I believe, we've talked to communications about making sure that the document is available to tenants and landlords for distribution. We've actually talked with the Housing Authority to really talk about their robust educational program goals in order to help facilitate some of the concerns that might come up for landlords that are adjusting to maybe a different situation. If they're interested in participating in a rental assistance program, and they've made the comparison of income and qualifications and found that they're interested in participating in a rental assistance program process. But that isn't the ordinance. The ordinance is really to avoid discrimination as a source of income. It's to make sure that those individuals that are eligible and have the financial ability to pay for the rent with the resources that they have, that they're able to actually apply, and they know what their rights are when making application. So I think we can get there. And if there's concern regarding the language I mentioned earlier about the late fees and notices that has been approved by St. Petersburg, I have, I can actually read that notice if that would provide some comfort to the board. That would it be included in our document for advertisement within the hearing process? So I do believe we can get there. And you have actually received, as of nine, recently, within the last hour or so, the actual language regarding the fees. And like I said, I apologize for getting them to you lately, later. We were looking for the actual language all day yesterday, trying to find it. But we were able to locate it late yesterday, and unfortunately, it did not get in queue. But if there's, if that would give someone comfort, I can read the language in order to have it officially in the record, if that would be preferred.
Thank you. I didn't know if there was any response. I actually have a couple of questions. Just if this were delayed, when would it be set for? I guess that would be a question for Ms. Beck.
I think if you deferred it, it would simply mean that at the next meeting on the 3, we could then be directed to set it for your next meeting. I guess that would be the first meeting in April. At any time that you direct us, all we need is 10 days to advertise. So I guess it would be delayed by one meeting if you were able to come to agreement on the 3.
Right, because we don't have any, we don't have two meetings in March. So it's, and it's a longer delay than usual. But I also, I guess, too, Ms. Takamori was speaking to this, correct?
Correct, yes.
Just in terms of the concerns that Commissioner Cohen brought up, to me, I would just like her advice or anyone's, those seem like things that could definitely be altered or dealt with within the, even if we pass this today, a concern like that would be, I don't know if you want to respond to that or more in the?
I'll let Nancy elaborate, but it really just comes down to what's in the notice. So for example, if we advertise the ordinance with the fees that Commissioner Overman is referencing, it's not material to delete it because the public was on notice that we were going to be considering that. The only time it becomes problematic is if there's a whole new concept or something that we can't reasonably say put the public on notice. So I'll turn to Nancy, though, if she wants to elaborate on that.
Yes, thank you. I believe that if adjustments were made on the issue of the timing of the delivery of the request for notice or whether it applies just to new tenants as opposed to existing tenants, that that could be made without affecting the validity of the notice. And I guess same with the, if there are adjustments made to the definition of rental unit, I don't think that would change the effectiveness of the notice because the title of the ordinance in the notice is more broad than that.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. I'll just say for myself, I was not familiar with this issue and read up on it in terms of the Section 8, that a landlord could disqualify someone from consideration or just writes on notices that they won't accept anyone on Section 8. And I was honestly a little bit taken aback that that is a practice. And it did read that it is prohibited in Broward and Miami Dade, as well as 14 different states. But I also read accounts of people that could actually, you know, afford places, found themselves homeless due to, one woman, due to the fact she lived in the same place for four years, no problem, everything was fine, except that the owner sold the property and they made a decision about changing it. And she had her kids in that school district, and it was just, she couldn't get anyone else to accept the Section 8 voucher, and it was a really desperate situation. And read about others, and I was unaware of this issue. And I would like to see that remedied in Hillsborough County to the extent we could. Nothing's 100% sure, but I do think it sounds as though we have ways to deal with any issues we might have, to bring others along and to respond in a reasonable way over the next month or, well, I guess, few weeks to concerns about this. And if not at the time, we can also work on it further at that time. So I would be supporting moving ahead with Commissioner Overman's proposal. And I appreciate having this highlighted because I do think it's a serious issue. And for someone who is struggling, and there are so many people struggling, I think as well, we've, as Commissioner Smith pointed out, I had presented the racism as a public health crisis and believed it when I did it, felt strongly about it. There's been a lot of talk about equity. And I don't know what the Section 8 applicants are exactly, but lower-income people for sure. And also probably in a large part, as we know, probably African-American, Hispanic, and others, people struggling. So I would like to see us address this sooner rather than later. So I'll be supporting the motion as it is. I don't know if there's further discussion. I don't really see, Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Myers. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree with all the comments that have been said. I do have concerns what would be being added. I don't know if the County Attorney's Office has had the opportunity to review yet. Speaking as a former county employee, nothing comes to the board unless it is approved by the legal department. And so that's one concern I would have. I'm not against what we're doing. But if we can break this maybe down into segments and support a portion of it to make sure that when it does come back to us, and support a portion of it to make sure that when it does come back to us, it's inclusive of everything that we want to be in the Bill of Rights. Yes?
Yes, Commissioner, just to address that, we, Ms. Takamori can confirm this, but the fee item that was added this morning by Commissioner Overman is something that is already included in another ordinance, and it's simply providing notice. And Nancy, if you would just confirm that you're legally comfortable with adding that, that would be helpful.
Yes, Christine, and board members, I am comfortable with adding it. I was familiar with that provision of the St. Pete ordinance prior to Commissioner Overman adding it this morning, so I had previously reviewed it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see several commissioners with their hands up, but I think they might just be remaining there from before. Commissioner Smith, do you have more that you'd like to add to this discussion?
Yes, please. Just to, just to clarify the point about the record and the time that we've had so far, it was on January 6, six weeks ago, that during the future issues portion, that Commissioner Overman requested that county administration and county attorney's office bring back a renters' bill of rights to the February 3 meeting. And then, two weeks ago, at the February 3 meeting, the motion that was approved there was to approve the Affordable Housing Services Department's recommendation to adopt a renters' bill of rights, requiring landlords to provide a notice to tenants of their housing rights and identifying resources for tenant assistance, and consider the adoption of adding provision to the renters' bill of rights prohibiting landlords from discriminating against prospective tenants on the basis of lawful source of income, including Section 8 vouchers, and to direct the county attorney's office to draft all of this. And so I feel like this has been proceeding in the usual kind of timeframe for doing things like this, particularly given the, as I say, the urgent urgency of economic distress that so many families are feeling right now as we're trying to help people stay in their homes and not be evicted. The flip side of that is trying to help people find housing when they have lawful vouchers from one source or another. And that is a, that is really limiting the pool of places people can live. So I feel like we've, that everyone's had time, and will have more time, to address this in the proper process that we ordinarily do. So thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman?
I'd just, I'd just like to wrap this up so that we can move forward. As we've heard from our county attorneys, that we have time to give you the documents for consideration at the hearing. We'll have a hearing to discuss it and have opportunities to talk with the public and to consider the language, not only that was previously submitted, as well as the language associated with the fees and fines. So notices, notices. So I'd like to see if we can move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And at this time, I don't see any other board comments or discussion, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is now after 10, so we can go to our public hearings. The first one is Item D1. Adam Gormley will present this. This is the second of two required public hearings, and this is one action will be required. Mr. Gormley?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D1 is a second of two required public hearings to consider adoption of a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, the school board of Hillsborough County, and homes by West Bay LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Hinton-Hawston subdivision consisting of 571 single-family detached housing units. The agreement calls for a payment of $1,394,377 to fund the construction of 50 middle-school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. The stations are to be constructed at the PK through A UU school in the water set development. This is a public hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I see that there is one speaker listed, Kami Corbett. Is Kami Corbett there?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This is Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, and I am available to answer any questions, and I would respectfully request that you approve this item this morning.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Hearing that there are none, I'll close the public hearing and move to board discussion or a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan to approve, seconded by Commissioner Overman. And seeing no board discussion, I'm sorry, did, yeah, Commissioner Myers?
No, I second the motion.
Oh, okay. And Commissioner Myers seconded the motion as well. Thank you. And seeing no further board discussion, if we could go to a roll call vote?
Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item D2. This is also a public hearing to approve the final assessment resolution and assessment role to create the Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Assessment Unit. And George Cassidy and Beth Chanilla are here to present this item.
Thank you, Ms. Wise, and good morning, Madam Chair, and Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item D2 is a public hearing for the Board to approve final assessment resolution and assessment role to create Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Assessment Unit 21101. As you are aware, this is a 20-year program to pay Water-Wastewater impact fees, and over the course of the 20-year period, the county anticipates collecting $11,386,231. The collection from these assessments is included in our current fiscal year 22 Water Resources budget, proposed budget. And as a footnote, if you recall, the Board moved on February 3 to sunset the assessment program itself, leaving a window of opportunity for you to consider this last unit. This is the last final impact fee assessment unit, 21101, that the Board will be considering. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have two speakers listed. Noel Lacor? Is Ms. Lacor?
My name is Noel Lacor. First, I...
You're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Noel Lacor. First, I would like to thank you all for voting to sunset the unnecessary and damaging program of allowing developers to high-impact fees within homeowners' property taxes to be paid over 20 years instead of the developer paying those impact fees upfront. It is programs such as this that are in part to blame for our county's inadequate infrastructure. Also, thanks to this program, homeowners end up paying a much higher amount than if the impact fees had just been paid upfront. These last 39 applications, which total approximately 1,500 water connections and 1,800 wastewater connections, should not be approved. Continuing to allow developers to get away with not paying Water and Wastewater fees and impact fees upfront is just digging a deeper hole. Most of these applications are located in South Hillsborough County, which you all know is entering a water crisis. If these applications are approved today, then the county will only collect approximately $527,000 a year for 20 years instead of the nearly $11 million upfront. Over $1 million of that is for developer Jeff Hills projects. Hasn't he made enough money at the expense of Hillsborough County residents, especially South Hillsborough County? He needs to pay his own bills and upfront. Hillsborough County needs that impact money now, not later. The county is quickly running out of water, especially in South Hillsborough County, where, again, most of these applications are located. There's low flow issues, water restrictions, water and wastewater rate increases. Enough is enough. Please vote no on these last 39 applications. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Gordon Schiff. Gordon Schiff?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. Can, Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Gordon Schiff. I'm just, I signed up, and I'm just monitoring the approval. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And with that, we don't have any others listed, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing and move to board discussion. And I see that Commissioner Overman's hand is raised.
Actually, I believe Commissioner Smith would have her hand up prior to mine.
Oh, thanks. I can't, it doesn't rank them anymore, so I just have to look. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. As I've been saying for some time, this is a, this water assessment way of dealing with water impact fees is a bad deal for the county. It's a bad deal for the home buyers. The home buyers, when the developer is allowed to voice their share of impact fees off on the home buyer, it adds 12% worth of interest and fees to this tax payment that the home buyer ends up paying. So the home buyer ends up paying nearly twice what the developer should be paying upfront if they were paid in the same way as every other impact fee in every other county. Meanwhile, we have to wait 20 years to get the full amount. As one of the speakers noted, this last batch of impact fee assessment units, you know, it's 39 applications, but each application is for many, many homes in large subdivisions in some cases. So it includes a lot of new development outside the urban service area in South County, where water infrastructure is especially stressed. We need this money upfront. We do not need to wait 20 years for it, and we certainly do not need to pay any finance charges of bonds to cover this expense while we wait 20 years to collect it. This last batch is $10.5 million worth of impact fees. We need that money now from the developer, like we do every other impact fee, like every other county in Florida does. Commissioners, next Wednesday at our Water Workshop, we will begin considering the difficult question of raising water rates on our citizens to pay for the infrastructure we desperately need to provide water. We should not even consider asking our homeowners to pay more unless we can assure them that we are making developers pay their fair share. Otherwise, these homeowners in these new developments before us today, in this batch of assessment units, will be hit with a double whammy. They'll have the developer's impact fee on their tax bill, and they may well be facing an increased water bill, and that is not fair. And so with that, I will, I will vote to deny this last batch of impact fee assessment units.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second to deny. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate, I've been out of favor, is probably the best way to describe this, out of favor of this program, given the financial inequities associated with it and the additional costs it's fostered onto the citizen that wants to purchase a home, as well as the significant financial risk that it is passed on to the homeowner of future consequences associated with having to bear the finance cost of the infrastructure when their home was originally built. So as I mentioned, I will, I will vote to deny on this.
Thank you. And Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve.
Second.
We have a substitute motion to approve by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioner Hagan. And is there further discussion? Commissioner Cohen?
Yes, thank you very much. So this is something we've been talking about for some time, because as everyone remembers, we sunsetted this program on February 3. And I want to say at the outset that I agree with the majority of what Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Overman just said, and that's why I voted to sunset the program. I think that all in all, it is not a good deal for taxpayers, and it is much better that we get these fees upfront in a pay-as-you-go environment. But that said, we specifically on December 16, when we started considering this, said that we were going to cut off applications as of that day, and these are the ones that were, were in the process when that, when that occurred. And my discomfort with voting against them is that I think that that was the rules when the program existed. That was the rules. And like I said, I was more than happy to vote to end it. But I don't like to change the rules in the middle of the game. To me, that is just not the way that we ought to be doing business. And that is what, what leads me to say that I am going to vote for this last unit. And I just want to reiterate again that I'm really glad that I'm never going to have to deal with this question again, and that the program doesn't exist anymore, because ultimately, we will be much better off moving forward without, without this program. Thank you.
And I see some, it looks like Commissioner Smith and Commissioner White have their hands up, but I'll, I want to jump in at this time. I've been looking at this program now for two years, and raised, eliminating it, raised as well bringing back the AGRF fee, which is a fee of basically 1,800 per home. City of Tampa pays it as well. We got, we were rid of that for six years, from 2014 to 2020, lost $100 million in infrastructure because we didn't have it. We brought it back. You weren't here for that. As well, our, our Water and Wastewater program had not been, the impact fees had not been studied and looked at, assessed for decades, as far as anyone knows. So they did go up from average, as I understand, from 3,500 to something like 5,600 just recently. The first time that that new fee was being charged was October 1. But for, but that wasn't paid, that higher rate wasn't paid for all these years as well. And so we have the AGRF, we have the wastewater and water fees, and then we had this placed on the tax, as a tax on the home. And I was told for years that this was bonded, but I just found out yesterday, and I wanted to fall off the chair, when I found out it wasn't bonded for most of it. In the past 20 years, there's been two different bonds issued. One was for 2.8 million, and one was for 10 million. The rest of it came straight out of our water program. That, that adds up, by the way, over already, already, the next 20 years, $311 million we're going to be waiting for, 311 million over the next 20 years. There's no reason to add another 11 million to it. Over the past 14 years, they couldn't go back so far, we have given, we have collected or we have put on the tax rolls, 220,600,000, 220,600,000 over the last 14 years have been put on the tax rolls. That's money that we have not had for what is desperately needed. And in the meantime, what Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen haven't been here for is these very astronomical rate increases that have been put forward to us, which I refuse to do anything but the first two years of it at the time. refuse to do anything but the first two years of it at the time. And the reason, and I insisted that I wasn't going to do anything more until we brought back the AGRF and until we dealt with this. The reason is because it is profoundly unfair, what has happened. What has happened is anyone in unincorporated county who pays their water bill every month is having these costs shifted to them. And this is $11 million more that we are putting on their backs to pay for and through the, through our water enterprise system. The developers have been far on notice, they've been on notice forever about this. They have known very, very well. And that's the reason we have the biggest push ever, this $11 million, brings it up to 43 million this year. I mean, that is crazy. And they were all getting in at the last minute so they could get in on the lower water and wastewater fees of rush because they knew that this, they wanted to save these dollars. It's very, very profoundly unfair. It remains profoundly unfair. I'd like to finally slay this dragon. I appreciate the support for getting rid of the impact fee assessment program altogether. But what we're doing today, if we vote to let this $11 million, you're just putting it on the back. Somebody has to pay this, and it's not being bonded or anything else. So we're just putting this on the back of everybody who pays their water rates in unincorporated Hillsborough County, and that's going to come back to us, and we're going to hear about that. But it's just $11 million more that we're sticking on that program. None of this should have ever been done. They've all been on notice. Believe me, it's, it's, it's very unfair, I think, to do this last 11 million and to throw it on to our, our water rate payers to pay. But with that said, I will recognize now Commissioner Smith.
Yes, just to address the point about changing the rules. I understand that point, but we are not changing the rules today. We, we've already made this change. And, and here are the rules that have been, that have been in place and are in place today in front of us. The developers who indicated they'd like to be in this program understood full well that that program includes this step of getting approval from this board at a public hearing, and it's up to us to vote it up or down as we've, and we've had that option on every single batch. It's not that, oh, up until we sunset the program, everybody gets automatically approved. No, we've been, we've always had the option to vote on this. We have the option to vote it up or down today, and everybody knows that's a significant part of the process, is this public hearing today with the public input that I know you all have been seeing, and we heard some of that today. We've been passing these impact fee assessment units on a very slim 4-3 margin for a while, and everyone knows that can go either way. That's what a public hearing is for. The other part of the rule is that everyone understands the situation is elections matter. And there are a lot of people hoping that this new board they elected is going to fill the promises that so many elected officials have been making, that we are going to take a firmer stand on making developers pay their fair share of infrastructure as, as they take the profits of their development. So I am going to vote no on the substitute motion of approval. I hope it fails so we can get back to the main motion of saying no to this, as, as I've been saying for quite some time at all these hearings, as is our lawful option to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to vote yes on this particular project and call for the vote.
We can't hear her.
I'm going to vote yes on this particular project and call for the vote. I think we've had enough discussion on this particular item from all of us sharing how we feel, and I think it's time to vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you wanted to do that, you'd have to call the question. We have to have a vote on that.
Call for the question.
Is there anyone else in the queue, Madam Chair?
Yes, there is.
All right. I'll second the motion to call the question.
Okay.
And I believe that's not debatable. I believe it goes for a vote and requires a supermajority.
A supermajority, thank you. And can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion, or motion carried, or I'm sorry, motion failed, four to three. Commissioner Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
And Commissioner Overman, I thought that you were still in the queue. Were you?
Yes, I was. I took it down, given the question was going to get called, but I did want to make just a real quick comment. I do appreciate the concern regarding the issue and, you know, setting the public hearing. But just because the application was filed does not mean it would be approved, and just because we establish a public hearing doesn't mean it would be approved. And I've been very consistent on these issues. So, you know, whether or not we have the hearing or not, or whether or not we just let the business owners understand that delaying the process or continuing with the process would imply that it would be approved in the future is challenging. So I just would like to move forward with the denial as previously proposed or moved. I'll stop there.
And I think we have six commissioners present now, so I'm not sure what to do here. I know we can do the vote, but also I'll, I guess we could call the question.
The question's been called. It's time to vote.
So we'll just, and it's a Commissioner White and Commissioner Hagan, so all those.
We just lost our quorum.
A roll call?
We just lost our impersonal quorum.
Oh, okay. I see.
You still have a quorum?
No, we don't have a quorum present in the room. Commissioner Hagan walked out. So I guess we'll wait for a second here.
Would you like to take a few-minute recess?
That wouldn't be maybe a bad idea for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We'll recess for five minutes.
10:45 or so. Wait. I guess a recess. Thank you.
And we'll call the meeting back to order, and Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Overman are present online?
Yes. I'm present, yes.
Okay. So we'll move now to the motion, the substitute motion that was made to approve the final assessment resolution and assessment role to create the water and wastewater impact fee, Unit 21101, and moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Can we have a roll? I don't think there's anybody else that wants to speak at this time. Or Commissioner Myers, did you want to speak? Your hand is up.
No.
Okay. Okay. And seeing no further discussion, we'll go to a roll call.
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item E1. This is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. And with that, I will turn it first over to Tim Dudley to present the emergency management update. Dr. Holt will follow with Kevin Wagner. We will have a vaccine update by Dr. Holt and Tim Dudley, and then the county attorney's portion regarding the extension of the local state of emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Dudley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Dudley, Office of Emergency Management Director. I'll provide an update on current operations. County testing sites, with the exception of USF, are available for first come, first served with no appointments necessary. We will be expanding the use of the Binax Now Rapid Antigen Test to the Williams Owen Advanced VOGA testing sites on Monday. We are currently doing rapid tests at Lee Davis and Raymond James as well, so that'll expand that capability. The state testing site at Raymond James Stadium, numbers have been down well below operating averages. We anticipate this to pick up in the coming weeks. Vaccination Task Force update, Hillsborough County continues to dispense COVID-19 vaccinations to the population, provided by the governor's order. Quick update at the University Mall site. This site is currently being managed by the state, and they are continuing to look at ways to improve site operations. Just a reminder, at this location, appointments are mandatory. No walk-ups will be provided. Last week, Publix, Winn-Dixie, and Walmart pharmacies began COVID-19 vaccinations in Hillsborough County through the federal retail pharmacy program. To find participating locations and to make appointments, folks can visit hcflgov.net/staysafe COVID-19 information, and you'll be able to find and make appointments through the Publix, Walmart, and Winn-Dixie sites. This concludes my updates on current testing and vaccine operations by the county.
Thank you. And Dr. Holt? We have a report from Dr. Holt.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is Dr. Holt from the Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I'll again provide a very brief update on our Epi review, quick overview, and then Mr. Wagner will go through the dashboard, and then we will be available for questions. So first slide, please. Again, you can see that we are continuing on a downward slope. Our seven-day case average is now around 390, but that does keep us just above, or just above the threshold of the red zones. The floor of the red zone is, I remind everyone, that means we are seeing active and widespread community transmission continuing. Our positivity is around 7%. Our hospitals really have shown a notable decrease in both the number of admissions and their census to date. Their occupancy has really, like throughout the epidemic pandemic, has remained pretty unchanged at around 80% ICU and their general beds. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wagner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Business Analyst, Healthcare Services Department. Again, I will present the publicly available dashboard for all. Again, to date, there's been 106,996 cases, nearly 107,000 total residents confirmed with positive COVID-19. Estimated fatalities of that is 1,414, and the vaccinated is 54,258 on the first dose and 54,937 on the second dose of Hillsborough County residents. I'll speak to that just briefly. This data summarizes the number of people who've received their first dose or have completed the series of COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine. A person is only counted in one category for either in the first dose or the series complete. Individuals receive their second dose, they are moved from the first dose column to the series complete column. So these are unduplicated and a way to prevent for double counting. So individuals, as they receive their second dose, move from the first dose column to the second dose. As we know with the FDA data, it's very voluminous, so there is always a time delay in receiving the timeliness of the data just due to the large volume. As Dr. Holt indicated, on the second row, our cases rolling seven-day average is nearly 390 or 400, as well as on the 14-day average, again, 390, 400. So again, the seven-day and 14-day are stabilizing. Our testing, as Mr. Dudley indicated, has gone down. Again, this is all testing provided, reported to providers, not just Hillsborough County, but the testing has gone down over the last 14-day period to 34,367. With the correlation of that, our positivity has gone down to 8%, nearly 7% as indicated by Dr. Holt. The last row of the first page, the hospitalizations are holding steady. Again, occupancy is around 82.9% or 80% on historical trend, and the ICU occupancy has gone down as well, currently around 68%. And the hospital data is again updated weekly from our data source. Regarding Page 2, I speak into the bottom graph is our case summary per day, so this So this shows the trend over time over the last four months. On the far right-hand side represents February. Again, the 400 to 390 cases per day is equivalent to our early December caseload. So again, we are trending downward, as we've seen those spike in January, and we're slowly going downward in February. But as Dr. Holt indicated, still a high level of uncontrolled community spread. Page 3, again speaking to the bottom charts, the hospitalization census and admissions, again, have peaked in January and are slowly moving downward in February, the same pattern that we've seen. The testing summary page, Page 4. The bottom page is again our weekly 14-day testing that we've conducted. Again, we saw a high level in January of testing initiated. We are seeing a downward trend in the number of tests, again, under 35,000 in the last 14-day period, as indicated on the far right-hand side, with a positivity around 8%. Dr. Holt indicated a little bit more accurate data, around 7%. And our case data by school-age groups. The top has always indicated is the individual day, which shows variability. The bottom is the seven-day cases per 100,000. It allows for a trending view over time. As we see historically, the ages of 18 to 24 are still the highest, followed by 14 to 17. But all four of those age groups are becoming closer together with not as much spread, so that is a trend in a positive direction. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if, at this time...
At this time, we'll go to Dr. Holt to discuss the vaccination report.
I was just, I thought there might be questions on those two, but let's just move to Dr. Holt.
Yes, Commissioner. I'm going to start off with a very high-level review of what's going on countywide with our vaccine program. And then Mr. Dudley will provide a review of what I proudly say a very highly successful targeted vaccination area program. So, first slide, please. This is something we've seen before. This shows weekly, every week, the number of residents that have been vaccinated, residents of Hillsborough County. As you can see, the past three weeks, we've sort of really relatively flat stabilized at about 15,000 to 18,000 a week. I do believe, and we are uncovering, that there are still some under-recording or delays in reporting through our Florida charts. So you'll notice if I give this report in two weeks, those numbers may have changed as they are dated. Cumulatively, we're over 110,000 people, residents, that have at least received a dose, and that represents 9.6 of the eligible, anyone over 16, I should say, population of Hillsborough County. Those that have completed the series is about half of that, at almost 5%. Focusing on our priority, if we look at the table below, there is the 65 and older group. Again, we estimate about 200,000 people. We have now vaccinated with at least one dose almost essentially 34% of our residents. And about 14% have completed their series with both doses, so they are fully immunized. The under 64 down to 16 really is the eligible people in this population or our healthcare professionals. There's a small number of under 64 that have medical conditions, but that's really limited to the hospital vaccines. So this really is our healthcare professionals. We're up to 40,000 total. That's 4.3% of the entire population, but if you look at that subset of healthcare professionals, that's about 20%, with 10% have completed their series. Next slide, please. This is a little different. This looks at doses administered by anyone providing vaccine in Hillsborough County. And I think what it shows is that Hillsborough County, where I think our healthcare, private sector leadership, and our county, and subsequently our state sites, serve as a regional hub. So of the 200,000 doses provided, about a third of them have gone to people who do not reside in the county. And again, so this report's total number of doses is not people that have been administered, whether they were a resident or not. And again, I think this is a reflection of the leadership that both our county and our healthcare providers have done. In addition, it's just a highlight for Mr. Dudley, because again, the TVA is, I think, a very exciting and a very impactful program. Complementing these, we have done three, what's called PODs, closed events, that were done for dentists, healthcare professionals. And we also did a focus of the Hillsborough County Community College with both their medical staff and 65 and faculty. I'll stop and turn it over to Mr. Dudley.
Good afternoon. Loading slides here. I'll be providing a brief overview of our targeted vaccine areas program. Hillsborough County Emergency Management Vaccine Task Force is working closely with Agent Services, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, and the City of Tampa Fire Rescue, faith-based groups, and elected officials to plan and conduct dispensing in targeted vaccine areas, TBAs, which focus on small, more vulnerable, and underserved groups in Hillsborough County. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Myers for her leadership and support during the faith-based group operations, and to thank the county administrator for, and Dr. Holt, for spearheading this program, and the teams that have been working hard to ensure that we get the vaccines to the most vulnerable. We focused on these three mission areas, independent living facilities for seniors, faith-based community groups, and senior housing communities. Individuals being served at TBAs must still meet eligibility requirements under the state vaccination orders, and TBAs should accommodate groups of 100 to 800 people with transportation disability or other challenges that are not being served by traditional PODs sites. We will conduct site visits before TBA teams arrive. And TBA teams consist of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Tampa Fire Rescue, Department of Health, ambulance providers, AMR, trans care, as well as OEM teams. During the site visits, representatives from DOH and ELC will determine logistical requirements and site layouts. This is important to ensure that we have a smooth vaccination program as we visit these sites. The hosts are responsible for collecting names of those who are eligible and desire vaccine. Host organizations must provide enough space for walk-up or drive-through PODs, and host organizations will also be asked to provide volunteers as needed. So far, six TBA sites completed first and second doses vaccinations. We have 24 additional TBA missions have begun vaccinations for Hillsborough County residents, and second doses appointments also scheduled. We have 25 TBA missions have been conducted by Hillsborough County, four conducted by the state, and one site conducted by the City of Tampa. And we will continue to rotate these streams throughout as we go through the scheduling process. To date, you can see here where we have conducted first and second doses for those six sites that I mentioned, and you can see the future schedules here for a total of 14,473 first doses. This is what our teams are working on this week, a little over 1,600 for first doses, and a little over 1,000 for second doses. Here's next week's schedule. We'll be looking at completed 4,700 second doses to be dispensed through next week, which will give us a total of over a little 23,000 doses administered under the TBA program. Another initiative that we're excited to see come online by the end of the week, the mobile home vaccination program. This will start by the end of the week. We will be contacting individuals that are identified on Department of Health Special Needs Registry and Agent Service Client List. Trans care will take the lead. They will operate up to four teams to vaccinate around 24 individuals per day. The goal is to increase capacity to 60 to 80 individuals per day. And mobile vaccinations will serve Hillsborough County residents that cannot leave their home and be served by our TBA or POD location. This concludes my overview. Any questions?
Thank you. I'm looking here for questions. I actually have a few questions. The, it looks like, when I was looking at one of the first graphs, that we got a small bump maybe from the Super Bowl and a rise in infections. Is that accurate? Or does anyone have any, just, I see a few hands now, but... Anyone have any response? Dr. Holt, maybe?
Yeah. At this time, you know, I don't think I can attribute any of the changes within the Epi curve at this time to any particular event. You know, we are entering that period that if we do start seeing it, it could reflect. But at this very high, where we're up so high, it takes a lot to jump us up. So I'd be better able to answer that probably next week or the week after.
Mm-hmm. But that being said, the news looks good, like it is all over the country. A drop from, in I guess just two weeks, from 12% positivity to 8% positivity, which is quite dramatic, it seems. And also, a lot of people still being tested. I saw 34,000 people still being tested, and that is quite a lot for Hillsborough County. Just, I have two figures. One was something near 100,000 people who've gotten the vaccine, 108,000. Another one, 132,000, I guess, when we improve, when we look at private health providers in the county, 132,000 people. Do we know when we will have vaccinated everyone, according to the criteria, the healthcare workers and everyone 65 and over? What are we, do we have any projection of everyone who wants the vaccine, when that might occur?
This is Dr. Holt, and just to clarification, the 130,000 is doses given, it's not necessarily the people, so there's a little distinction there.
Right. I understand.
Just to be clear. At this time, projections are hard only because, at the current rate, it's clearly going to take us a while. If you look at, on an average, if we're doing 10,000 to 15,000 collectively first doses, you know, and we are trying to vaccinate a percentage of the 65 and older that want to be vaccinated, you know, it's going to take us some months. I just, I can't change that. But what can change and will change is the supply of the vaccine. It's been very disappointing in the last almost two months, because we're essentially getting the same amount that we got in the first week of January. But clearly, under the federal initiatives, our community partners, the FQHCs, Tampa Family, Suncoast are receiving supply. Pharmacies are going to start receiving, and they're going to get more and more. And we still anticipate more coming through the state. So, you know, I think I initially had projected or hoped that we would get up into the 20,000 first doses. And if we do that, we can cut that in half. So I really can't give you an exact prediction.
Okay. I wasn't expecting an exact prediction, but I just kind of wondered, because I know we have 200,000 people over 65. I just, but I know it is speeding up, and the news is looking better. And I guess only about 3% of people have gotten their second shot. But, and 6%, it looks like overall, have at least have gotten a first shot. But in terms of also forward, do we have any idea now? Right now, it's open to healthcare workers and those over 65. Is there any information available now, when it starts opening up? How it opens up? Or, you know, would it be to people over 55? Would it be to teachers? Do we have any information like that?
This is Dr. Holt again. I do not. The under 64 medically vulnerable have been included, but that's a hospital decides that. And the Governor has not indicated, really, if he's going to do it gradually by age, or what you're, I think, referring to is what's called essential workers. The challenge with essential workers is defining that. And then, within the distribution system, being able to separate that. So I think if you get to that point, it's going to be just pretty much open. So I would suggest that your only next step would have to almost be age, if you're going to take incremental expansion. That's my opinion, and not anything that the Governor or the state has shared with me.
And finally, there was a lot of press attention last week to when kind of the state, and I want to make it clear that the county is assisting state efforts, but it's a state program now, for the most part, the vaccinations. And there was, you know, I know I got contacted. I'm sure other Commissioners got contacted, all kinds of phone calls and emails about the wait in line. Some people described it as five hours long, being incredibly difficult up on Fowler Avenue, causing all kinds of issues. And I just wondered what the, you don't usually hear when things go better. And I felt very good about when the county was running it. I thought we were doing a very good job. I know that there were issues with the calls and the availability to sign up. But in terms of when the shots were administered, it was well done. But nonetheless, because the county did it initially, many people have called, contacted us, complained. We've seen the press accounts. And I was just wondering what the statuses, statuses of, up there on Fowler Avenue, and what is going on now? Are people getting through better? Is it, you know, is it running better than it did initially?
I think it's best that Mr. Dudley respond.
Thank you, Ms., sure. I wasn't sure who to read.
This is Tim Dudley. Over the past two to three days, I've been checking in with the site as of this morning, as well as the previous couple of days. The site seems to be holding capacity at this time. I know the, checked in with the state incident commander out there. They've reduced... They've reduced the number of appointments here briefly. They tried to get it under control and take a look at what's the best, the best cap to keep that out at. And we've had some assistance. They've sent the Florida Department of Transportation as well, as Florida Highway Patrol, and Sheriff sent the city law enforcement to look at some traffic patterns. And I also know the state is taking a look at possibly a second site also to try to relieve some of that pressure at the site as well. No decision has been made on that at this time, so we're, we're standing by to have further discussions. But as, as of this morning, they seem to be running well.
Thank you. And with that, I'll go recognize Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And my questioning is very similar to what you've asked, Chair. I have seen that in the, the slides that we took a look at in the February fourteenth update, that the first doses for sixty-five and older, we're at a thirty-three point nine percent. And, you know, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have, you know, that sixty-five over at close to thirty-four percent. My question lies in the fact that we are doing such a great job of, of targeting those vulnerable communities, including our seniors, and I want to thank Commissioner Myers for her leadership working with the faith-based groups. I have had actually been focusing as, on our, our nursing homes, as well as our affordable housing communities, where there is a significant number of individuals that are vulnerable, but also over the age of sixty-five. And we've done a great job through this, this targeted area or TBA program, and I'm very happy about how that's rolling out. I'm very proud of, of our emergency folks that have been able to make that happen. But my question lies in that, you know, Hillsborough County is doing the most in the way of vaccinations, based on quantity or quality that we have. And we may hit a, a number of, that appears as though we've hit a lot of the folks at the sixty-five range, maybe prior to other counties. What is the process and what percentage, you know, vaccination do we have in that age group that would allow us to open it up? Or are we dependent on the governor's decision to move to the next tranche? I mean, if we hit a reasonable exposure, you know, a vaccination goal, and I don't know what that number is, but if I had that number, you know, if we hit that number in Hillsborough County, are we permitted to open up to the, the second level of vaccination goals? And I believe that's for Dr. Holt, in terms of being able to answer that question, and I'll stop there.
Yes, ma'am. We, we are completely defined by the exec, current executive order, which defines the eligibility that were laid out December twenty-third. Only the governor can really expand. We, we have to work within that guidelines.
But that does, doesn't help me understand what the percentage exposure, in other words, are we required to have a hundred percent of the over sixty-five vaccinated in order to move to the next level? I don't think that's reasonable, but I'm curious to, to know what that adequate exposure would be. And if Hillsborough County hits it first, do we have to hold off until the rest of the state does?
Yeah, I, I can't answer for the governor on either of those questions. The percentage that, you know, I guess if you were, I don't know what that percentage would be. You can't really apply herd immunity targets to a subset of the entire community, so that doesn't work. And I don't believe he would work and have different counties having different eligibility. But that's, again, not in my, I'm not aware of his thinking and what his decision-making would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know, Commissioner Myers, do you have your hand up? Or, okay, thanks. So there are no more hands and no more comments, so I think we'll move on now to the county attorney.
Yes, Commissioners, very briefly, and as always, keep, in keeping with Florida statutes, we've prepared another draft order to extend the local state of emergency for an additional seven days, and it is in your backup, and it would be appropriate to consider a motion relative to that order at this time.
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Overman moved approval, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call? Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White voted no. Thank you. And Ms. Wise, moving right along.
Thank you, yes. And I know we have a lot of people on the line waiting for these various items. So the next item is Item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the creation of the Hillsborough County Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment Program, better known as ACE. This is pursuant to Commissioner Myers' motion on December second. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Myers, their staff, to speak, and also some invited guests.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. The Apprenticeship to Career Employment Program, known as ACE, is a unique program designed specifically for persons living in underserved communities, persons who are existing out of foster care, and individuals who are escaping human trafficking within our county. The ACE program offers hope and opportunity through skilled training, earned while you learn, for persons ages eighteen to twenty-five years old. For me, the ACE program is a vision realized with the support of our county staff working with me to ensure that this program meets county requirement. And I'd like to thank the public and private sector, and you would be introduced to them later. At this time, I'm going to move fast forward. City Councilman Louis Vieira is on the line, and so if he can speak, if he's still on the line. Okay, appear not. He, I would like to thank our Assistant County Administrator, Ron Barton, Lindsey Kimball, Director of Economic Development, and Kenneth Jones, the Manager of Workforce and Community Stabilization, as well as Assistant County Attorney, Sam Hamilton, for working with me to bring us a product that we will all be very pleased of when you hear the report from staff. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant County Administrator, Ron Barton, to introduce our public-private sector all-star team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity, and we're pleased to be here with you this morning. We're going to try to move this program along, even though we have a lot of participants. In my introductory comments, I just have a couple of things. Number one, wanted to differentiate G1 and G2, just as we begin this conversation. Even though both mention apprenticeship programs, they're very distinctly different conversations. G1, as Commissioner Myers has teed up, is a new apprenticeship program that we want to work with Career Source and the private sector, and a missing element related to skills advancement and career advancement, particularly for disadvantaged youth and young adults. G2 is recognition of apprenticeship program as it relates to the award of county procurements and bids, and is related to being in the procurement process itself. So just as an introduction as to why G1 and G2 mention apprenticeships, but are distinctly different conversations. And then lastly, just in my comments, I want to, I want to basically commend Commissioner Myers in working with John Plantigan, the Career Source, the private sector, which you'll hear from, as well as a lot of our other partners. This was a missing step in the progression for many of our youth and young adults, and basically getting on the right path for a good job, a good career, a good pay, and many of these individuals were frankly getting left behind in that process. And we think the program that we've proposed to you, and the ACE program, will do that, and we certainly were happy to work with Commissioner Myers on bringing this report forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Lindsey Kimball, our Director of Economic Development, and she'll give you an overview of the ACE program.
Great. Thank you, Ron. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lindsey Kimball, Economic Development Director. The ACE program will be an exciting new workforce development initiative that will open up new pathways and opportunities for low-income youth. And I just want to also note, for the record, we are also specifically being assistance to foster children, those, those aging out of the foster system, as well as those who are victims of human trafficking and escaping that horrible situation. So wanted to make sure we noted that as well. Also, I'm going to explain a little bit about the nuts and bolts associated with the ACE program, a little further into the importance of the partners that we have with us today, as well as some of the partners out in the community. So the simplest way to describe the program is that we're identifying and training youth and giving them stackable skills necessary to succeed in high-potential careers, and matching the job opportunities and training. So they're earning while they're learning. They're not disconnected, they're disjointed. This is a process whereby the young person enters the ACE program, and they, they earn and they learn. Sometimes, these are disconnected, and you can provide skills to someone either for an industry that is, you know, not, not high-growth, or maybe not, won't be relevant in the future, which is, you know, not really doing them a good service. We plan to target those high-growth, high-success probability industries in our community, and as I said, training them and making sure that they have a employer to work with while they're learning. We're designed, the program is also designed to leverage grassroots knowledge of the community partners, to identify low-income youth ages eighteen to twenty-four that will be good candidates for the program. So there's a role for many, many of our community partners to help us identify these youth simultaneously. Career Source Tampa Bay, who you'll hear from today, and community partners, which you'll also hear from them today, with strong business relationships, will work to identify businesses in the community. So we've got to have that match of folks helping identify those young people and identifying those businesses that are, want to be proactive in being a solution in our community. Participants will spend two days a week in the classroom environment, and they'll also spend three days a week in on-the-job training. So like I said, they're earning and they're learning. They'll be, the training will last between eight to twelve weeks, depending on the industry. Career Source Tampa Bay will work with industry partners to create a fixed curriculum targeted to build their employability, our soft skills, skill sets, as well as a custom curriculum to meet the industry needs. We believe ACE has many benefits, everything from the obvious, which is helping underserved youth in our community who, you know, might be left behind, in another instance, if this program did not exist, and not be able to have a connection to a quality job experience. But we're helping them build deployability equity in themselves, right? So this is allowing them to establish themselves, have something to put on your resume, that's so important to be able to break through to the next level. They're also, we're providing them meaningful skills training. We are providing a defined curriculum with stackable certification. So this is a ladder, it's a career ladder that they're building, they're, they're starting on their, the first few rooms of that ladder, able to build on that in the future. We're also mitigating the hiring risk for the participating companies, right? So you get to, maybe these companies wouldn't have taken a chance but for this program on some of these young people. So that's very important as well, to, to understand that aspect. It's also an opportunity for local corporate partners to operationalize some of their commitments and stated goals for social and economic equity. So that's important as well. And of course, the long-term outcome, I think we all can see, is that we're building a program that will give these young people future self-sufficiency, resilience, and a reduction for the future need of social services. So all of this will get accomplished through partnerships. We've got Career Source Tampa Bay, they're, in fact, they're going to be administering the ACE program. They're providing consulting, the training, the placement, employer relations. CSTB is, or Career Source Tampa Bay is well-positioned with the knowledge, the staff, and the infrastructure throughout our county to do this. Others that will help us identify are here today and will speak, you know, the CDCs, the chambers of commerce throughout the county, the local business associations, faith and community leaders, educational institutions, and of course, corporate America, private sectors, businesses of all sizes, small, medium, large, and connections to the manufacturing alliance in Hillsborough County, which this county created and supports to this day. So the county will play an important role in ACE as well. We're going to be providing the funding, that's a big deal, administering the agreement with Career Source Tampa Bay. We're ensuring consistency with your vision as Board of County Commissioners, and we are always on the lookout for more partners to grow and support the team, because it takes a team, and as Frank Richard always says, and I love it, economic development's a team sport, right? So we, we've got to have those partners out there. So now that I've told you a little bit about how the program operates, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Ken Jones, who will explain where we go from here and how we move forward.
Thank you, Lindsey, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ken Jones, Economic Development Department Manager and the county's liaison to Career Source Tampa Bay, which serves as our local workforce development board. As the major benefits and components of the ACE program have already been presented, I'll simply highlight a few specific elements in our, in our next steps. We know that a significant population of young adults in our county want to improve their employment situation and self-sufficiency by learning a new skill, re-skilling, or upskilling. However, while they have the desire, many simply don't have the resources to do so. The ACE program includes some key elements to help address this need, with a goal of eliminating barriers to employment and providing participants a career pathway for a brighter future. The first and foundational step for participants is career counseling. This one-on-one interaction with a Career Source Tampa Bay counselor will include a skills assessment, an individualized career plan, introduction to the respective career pathways that are available within the ACE program, followed by an apprenticeship job placement. The apprenticeship job placement will consist of eight to twelve weeks. The length of that apprenticeship would depend on the industry, but it has two very important features that I'd like to speak to real, real briefly. The first one is participants trained with a business as a new employee, they will actually be employed, and they will receive training and offers, acquiring occupational skills and industry certification, and they will earn an income in this on-the-job training environment. And there's no cost to the businesses. The ACE program will cover one hundred percent of the wages paid to each apprentice. Lastly, and--
Mr. Jones, it seems we have lost your signal.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we have you back.
Okay, sorry about that. Our key next steps after today's presentation are to work with Career Source Tampa Bay and the county attorney's office to draft an, in current FY twenty-one. Under this agreement, Career Source will provide apprenticeships for up to one hundred youth between ages of eighteen and twenty-four from low-income households defined as up to one hundred and eighty-five percent poverty level, including those young adults exiting the foster care system and those escaping human trafficking. We'll then come back to you at your April seventh meeting with a finalized agreement for a pilot project for your approval. With the pilot project aligned for proof of concept, process and procedure improvement, and industry acceptance and credibility, we anticipate a scaled-up and full-speed-ahead program in FY twenty-two and twenty-three. Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'll now turn it back to Ron Barton.
Thank you, Ken. And the only other thing I would add as clarification is, one of the other reasons it's important to participate with Career Source Tampa Bay as our partner, is that we unlock some federal funds associated with the training. So when we say the county's going to fund this, what we really mean is the county's going to fund half of this. So that's why we, we want to-- So that's why we, we want to utilize that partnership. I noticed that the councilman has come back and joined us online, Councilman Vera, before a segue to some of our other business and community partners. Councilman, would you like to speak? And we lost him again. All righty. So again, to move this agenda item along, we do have a few speakers that we would like to present. I'm going to start with John Flanagan, CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay, our county's workforce board principal officer. And John, if you could, share some comments.
Will do, and thank you, Ron. Good morning, Commissioners. John Flanagan, CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay. As the county's designated workforce development board, one of our key priorities is to identify career pathways and certainly to identify some gaps in how those pathways exist. And thanks to Commissioner Myers and the staff at the county, we've identified a gap, and that's really what this program is designed to fix. It does provide experiential learning opportunities which are critically important into entering the workforce, particularly for, you know, the age group that we're, that we're identifying and engaging, as well as those who are suffering socio-economically. Even in the best of times, let's just take it back to pre-COVID, you know, the pre-COVID economy, when we had a sub-3% unemployment rate, the 18 to 25-year-old population had about a 13 and a half, almost 14% unemployment rate. So the difficulty for a very critical part of our workforce to enter employment has been a struggle. So programs like these are always geared and designed to remove that barrier for this specific group. And it's small steps at first, certainly this is a pilot program, but it's incredibly important to, to build a proof-of-concept model so we can take this out post, you know, post, post-pilot program and really offer it as a broad-based solution to some community issues that we have. So with the experiential learning, the ability to, to provide classroom instruction in combination with that, all while these individuals are able to earn a living wage, quite frankly, is important and it will draw, you know, it will draw our participants into this program that was typically a barrier because it's great to be able to learn, but you have to feed yourself and you got to put, got to put a roof over your head, too. So, you know, I want to commend Commissioner Myers for her idea and her concept, and certainly commend Ron and Ken and Lindsay and all the team at, at the county for, for coming up with us and really bringing me into the fold. And as Ron said, you know, we are the, we're the pass-through for your workforce dollars in Hillsborough County, so we ought to be participating. And the ability to be financial partners as well as program partners is really important for us. And it's great to see that we've got our business, our business representation here with Bob Rorlack, Craig Richards, Santiago Carrada, Bill Good from Bank of America are all here because we're all in support of this program. And we all understand, you know, from an economic development standpoint, talent development is critically important. Incentives are great and they, they help, you know, bring people to the table, but if we don't display a knowledgeable, skilled, talented workforce, it makes it more and more difficult to be, you know, a mecca for business attraction. So incredibly thankful and humbled to be part of this program. That's all I'm going to say. So I will turn it back to, I think I turn it back to Ron, and Ron, you could go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to turn it over to Bill Gady. Bill's the President of Bank of America Tampa Bay, and we're honored to have him give some comments as well. And he's been valuable resource in the conversation about how the private sector can get engaged in this effort. Thank you, Bill, for being with us.
Thank you, Ron, and good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the ACE program. I personally believe that the ACE program is an essential step in providing the opportunity for economic mobility in Hillsborough County. As I see it, the role of the ACE program with the support of the county and Career Source plays falls into three broad areas. First is providing quality job skills training. We've heard about that piece of it and the need for that part of the program. Second, it's helping the participants in the program understanding and understand the employment opportunities that are available to them in Hillsborough County. Ms. Kimball mentioned, her comment, opening a pathway to job opportunities. And that's really giving these individuals the empowerment to change their trajectory. And that's what I think the program will do so well. Then finally, it's partnering with the local employers like Bank of America to ensure job placement. Having a pipeline of qualified applicants is essential for any business to remain competitive and to grow. And consider that in 2020, Bank of America hired approximately 500 individuals in Tampa Bay alone. So having that pipeline of qualified candidates is critical to us and I see very, very important for our continued growth in Tampa Bay. And on behalf of Bank of America, I'm excited about the opportunity to partner with Hillsborough County and Career Source, and we are committed to working with the ACE program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to turn it over to Craig Richard, CEO of Tampa Bay Economic Development Council.
You're on mute, Craig.
Mr. Richard, you're muted. Well, I'll mute you now. Go ahead. We got you. Go ahead.
All right, there we go. Good morning, Madam Chair. Thanks, Ron. Good morning, Commissioners. Always good to see everyone, although I wish you were here in person. You know, I'm going to key in a little bit on what John Flanagan was talking about earlier in terms of the economic development component. In today's economic development landscape, it's all about the talent. It's all about the availability of good talent in a community. And what this program brings, it helps deliver, you know, more upskilled, available, quality talent with the experience that they need to take advantage of the jobs that are being created today. So this is a type of program that could make our community more competitive. And as everyone knows, and Lindsay referred to, economic development is a team sport. It's going to take all of us in order to deliver the type of available talent that we could use to be competitive, not only to attract companies, but to help the local companies that are here as well. More jobs are actually created on a local level from existing businesses than us bringing the businesses in. So this is going to benefit our local businesses as well as help us be more competitive with some of the communities that are, that we compete against on a day-to-day basis. Commissioner Myers, I just want to say thank you for championing this program. It's an outstanding idea. You've got a great team of staff that is ushering this in, and the EDC is proud to support it and promote it to our local businesses as well as making other businesses that are looking at our market aware of this type of program. So again, thank you. We're pleased to commit to it and pleased to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. And we're pleased to have Bob Rorlack, President and CEO of Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, more so than anything else because of the diversity of businesses that Bob brings to the table in his representation, but also frankly, small business, brings small business to this equation, which I think is very important. So Bob, if you could.
Sure. Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for addressing this very important issue. Bob Rorlack, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Chamber. And we've got a membership of over 1,400 members. A little over 70% of our members are small businesses, so it's vital that we be looking at the needs for business and what's going on. But this is a very important issue, as has already been mentioned, of addressing job skills and experience for the workforce, which is the most vital component for existing businesses and the one, the ones Craig, Craig talks to. We support this program. We think it's a win-win to help the workforce as well as businesses trying to match up in this need and addressing the areas you're talking about addressing, the, the underserved in our community, which is vital. We've learned that the rising tide lifts all boats economy is not the economy we live in anymore. It's up to all of us to make sure the rest of the community is progressing and succeeding as we all try to work and do better for our businesses in this environment. But I really want to congratulate you for making sure you're looking at the foster care community and the needs that are there. Children that are about to age out or recently aged out don't have the support for what, how they're going to take care of themselves. Commissioner Overman and I have talked about foster care many times before, and I, I thank you so much for including that. But also, as I've talked with Commissioner Overman and some of you about the importance of those who are being rescued from human trafficking. Studies show over and over, if those people aren't helped to stand on their own, they go back to the problem they were in. So you already are supporting SAFE, the Strategic Alliance, to fight exploitation, which is fantastic. And you also support Florida 127, which focuses on foster care support. This is being strategic in what you do, continuing to integrate all the different support mechanisms you have in place. So this is a fantastic effort. And as I was told years ago in my career, the best social program that's ever been invented is the dignity of a job, and you are doing it with this program. So I congratulate you on doing this. Thank you.
Bob, you stole my line.
Thank you, Bob. And certainly not least of our esteemed guests is Santiago Carrada.
Santiago, you're muted?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Barton. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, esteemed county staff, and those listening. First and foremost, thank you, Commissioner Myers and the county team for, for coming up and creating such an impactful program. Obviously, myself, our organization, in strong support, but I think I'm going to come at it from a different perspective here. As a former high school principal in Liberty City, Little Haiti, Miami-Dade County, and someone who championed programs like this, created these programs, these opportunities, I can tell you that this program can be life-changing and life-saving. So from a personal perspective, we're going to touch many, many lives that we're going to have a very positive impact. So again, critically important. Secondly, I represent an industry that over the last several years has shown unprecedented growth, even through a pandemic. New hotels, new restaurants, new attractions, new event-making, marketing, PR, you name it. We've seen that growth in this industry. And finally, Visit Tampa Bay is a very young organization. We pride ourselves on bringing young people to the table. I'm the old man on the team. And so I can tell you that we want to offer ourselves up as, as a place to, to bring on apprentices and internships. We've been doing it for many, many years, so have a track record in doing that, and always finding an opportunity for employment when they're done with us, either at Visit Tampa Bay or somewhere in our industry that has so many tentacles. So again, thank you for having me be a part of the team. You know, we're, we're talking team, and I often channel Rob Higgins, our sports commissioner, who says game day every day, and it's a team sport. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to address you today. We're all in.
Thank you, Santiago. I guess in, in closing and turning it back over to Commissioner Myers, we're so excited about the program, we forgot to tell you what ACE stands for. Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment Program, which are very powerful words, but that's what the ACE program is intending to do. We'll turn it back over to Commissioner Myers, but we certainly, if you are pleased with what you hear, then as Ken Jones said, we will take this program concept and build it into a contract with Career Source Tampa Bay, bring it back to you in the meeting in April with budget. And as, as Ken said, begin to implement a pilot program so we can get our legs under us, and then hopefully hit full stride in FY '22. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. We'll turn it back over to you.
And thanks to the team who has made and shared all of the information with us this morning. So I hope board members, you were able to have the opportunity to listen to see how important this program will help grow our local community with those that are looking for jobs.
And you're, with that, I guess we will go now to, I don't know if Commissioner Myers, if you, I don't know if there's any other comments.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with this report.
Second.
Second.
And Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Carradine, is there any other questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Yeah, sounds excellent.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, thank you.
And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
Just to confirm, we did receive information that the construction industries were stricken from this program. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I think that, that's really important. The only mention of wage level that I saw in here was $12 an hour for youth, although youth is defined as 18 to 24, I think, which gets into adulthood. So I hope, I would just ask, I'm not going to make this a motion, but I'll be looking for some commitment, some way that this program can be used to ensure that the participants are being put, placed into jobs that would have at least a $15-hour minimum wage. You know, as, as everybody has talked about, it's, it's really important to be having, providing jobs that, that provide a living wage to pay for a roof over their head. And some of the, some of the things we heard about today, and this county has made great progress where we can in leading our community toward providing a limit, a living wage. We've moved our own county to set a $15 minimum wage for our own employees, and we've required our waste collection contractors to commit to a $15 minimum wage. And several businesses in our community are, have made that commitment. So, you know, I just want to encourage staff to, to find ways to really make this program work to further that goal of, of placing people and getting commitments from our business partners in this program as we are helping to fund this training for, for their new workers that, that the ladder we're providing will lead towards a living wage in their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, you wanted to respond, Commissioner Myers?
I do agree with you, Commissioner Smith, for $15 an hour. And also would just like to say, I plan, once the board approves this ACE program in April, to champion this program to all of the public and private sector, because I envision that this program will be just like the county's Inogen Healthcare Plan. We're in the 28th year of our healthcare plan, and I anticipate with our ACE program, we will be around 28 years or longer. So not just to prove it, but to market it to the community and the corporate American, public and private sector, I plan to lead the way with this as well.
Great. I, I just want to, certainly had a star team in here, and we heard a lot about it. I'm, it's, it sounds like a great program and certainly fills a need that we have. And I just like to, just because we didn't hear all that much, but it's 100 young people from 18 to 24. And I would say, too, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Smith. In fact, would have trouble, even with everything on it being really excellent. I would have trouble with supporting this in the end if it wasn't $15 an hour. I think we have to do that. You know, this year, the state will move to $10 an hour as well. I just wondered, in terms of providing the resources, and because I am not familiar so much, I'm on the Board of Career Source now, but I'm still not as familiar. So do we know, like, in terms of budgeting, it sounds like Career Source, the businesses themselves, and the county will all be providing the wages. Is that correct?
The county will contribute some funds. From Career Source, they receive federal and state dollars, and so they would, I don't know if it's going to be matching our monies. I'm going to tell you, it will be.
Do you have?
John or Ron, would you like to?
Let me describe that detail when it comes back to you in April. I think a lot of those parameters will be established in that contract at that time.
Great. Because I, I think it'd be, it sounds as though it's all three contributing. That seems like it'd be important. And it's also an eight-to-12-week program. And the only, the only thing, I mean, I read through some of the other programs Career Source has. It looks, it looks very good. It looks a lot like Earn and Learn or something that they have, but that goes 16... It looks a lot like Earn and Learn or something that they have, but that goes 16 to 24. But, and I just, you know, that was called Earn and Learn, and I just wondered about, you know, I know we use the term apprenticeship in here, but, you know, it's defined in law in the Florida Department of Education, and I'm just wondering about accelerated career empowerment, rather than apprenticeship. To be more clear, the Earn and Learn, too, seem like a good name, but that keeps it at ACE. But I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration, you know, at this, at this time. But I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it fills a great need, has a lot of power behind it, obviously, and it looks good. And with that, I don't see, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, just want to support what you're suggesting, Commissioner Kemp. I understand the concerns of some of our building trade partners who say that they are concerned about confusing the terms apprenticeship, particularly with our next item that will be maybe, you know, creating an ordinance to support a very specific kind of state-sponsored, state-sanctioned, state-certified apprenticeships. If we kind of delude the meaning of apprenticeship with our own program of apprentices, which is really not apprentice, but more pre-apprentice or state-training program, things could get a little muddied about what exactly we are requiring in our other ordinances. So, you know, I think it's a great idea to consider renaming this Accelerated Career Empowerment Program or something like that, and I just would ask staff to consider that and possibly listen to the specific concerns of those who have been raising this issue about diluting the term apprenticeship within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Myers, you wanted to respond?
Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, for your comments. Using the word apprenticeship, and I've had several conversations with an all-star cast with the union, and only one person brought that up. And I checked the word apprenticeship. It is not a copyright word, and it's not a trademark. And so therefore, as I shared with county staff, we would like to move forward and want to move forward because apprenticeship, the word apprenticeship has meaning to it. So they understand that it is a program that one is being trained, that is coming into, and our program fits that need. And so I've shared my concerns when it was brought up on one of our telephone conversations, that I plan to move forward coming today with the word apprenticeship. If it was a copyrighted or trademark word, we would not be using it at all, but you can definitely use the word apprenticeship in any program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands up, so it looks like we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Can you do a roll call, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is Item G2. This is to receive a report from the county administration, the county attorney's office, regarding the creation of a program to establish apprentice program requirements. This, Commissioner Kemp, is related to your request, and then Commissioner White also asked to have a comparison as well. So Sam Hamilton will present this item from the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner, Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. I just want to give you a couple of brief highlights to the report that's been provided, and then, obviously, we can answer any questions and go from there that you may have. We've actually looked at various programs, largely in the state of Florida, also nationally, in the area of procurement-related apprentice participation requirements. And as the report reflects, there are essentially two types of structures. There's one, requirements, they have a circumstance where bidders on construction projects have to certify that they participate in a state or federal apprenticeship program, and that they have a stated percentage of the labor hours for the particular project performed by their apprentices. That type program has been established by Broward County, the city of St. Pete, city of Tampa is considering a similar structure. Each has some particular details in terms of the scope of the types of projects that apply, that it applies to, excuse me, all of which are construction in nature. They're either based on dollar thresholds. In Tampa's case, I think initially what they're considering is vertical construction, and I believe there are some proposals to potentially expand that if the program is enacted by the city of Tampa. The other style program we found appears to be limited to Palm Beach County. This was not put in place by ordinance, it's essentially county policy, and it's incentive-based. And in that circumstance, contractors, there's no standard requirement. If they are awarded a construction project, for instance, for Palm Beach County, they reimburse a portion of the apprentice wages, their expenses associated with apprentice wages, when they spend a minimum threshold amount on payroll costs for those apprentices for work performed on the construction contract. So it's sort of at the end of the construction project, sort of a lookback. If they've used apprentices, they'd actually be reimbursed for some percentage. Again, incentive-based, as opposed to sort of a requirements-based program. The other point I wanted to make, I think this was, it was mentioned in public comment earlier, as the report indicates, there have been a couple of bills, they appear to be companion bills, one at the House, one at the Senate, that have recently been filed to be considered this legislative session. They would both appear to preempt local governments from addressing these types of programs with respect to construction contracts. They don't really go beyond that. Other than that, just to save time, certainly be happy to answer any questions and obviously take any direction as the board sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, since I originally raised this, I like to just talk a little bit about it. One thing I know that there was initially, and for me, too, some confusion about exactly what the intersection was of what Commissioner Myers was suggesting and what I was bringing forward, and the intersection at this time is nothing. There's two entirely different programs, dealing with two entirely different things, in particular, as well, when Commissioner Myers took construction as out of that program. So there's absolutely no intersection. She's putting forward a very good, strong program for training 18- to 24-year-olds for eight-to-12 weeks with job opportunities in a number of areas. What this is, is something very entirely different. This would be an ordinance, that's what I want to ultimately move forward, that would be involved in procurement and require that any county contracts, this is just the county doing that with our resources that the taxpayers have paid to us, to make sure, and my intent in this is making sure that we have and train and have opportunities, and that the county is part of doing that, for skills, high-level skills training in the trades with our Hillsborough County dollars that we put forward. And we have, more and more, the trades are having fewer and fewer people entering, and as it was stated earlier, there is just incredible training that happens with the apprenticeships that trades do, and that includes 100, defined by the Department of Education. Actually, I know that, in fact, there's actually many more hours and time spent in many of the areas, but a minimum of 144 academic hours and 2,000 on-the-job training hours per year. And those are the standards that are required in the apprenticeship, defined by the Florida State Department of Education, when they recognize apprenticeships as part of that. This would require that when we have a county contract, over $1 million is what I want to do, anything over $1 million would require that they have a certain percentage of apprentices as part of that contract. I want to see 12%. That's similar to what Tampa has, and to what Broward had, and actually, the St. Pete ordinance is a little bit, St. Petersburg ordinance that they have is a little bit higher. So 12%, and I'm looking at that as well as to, I have looked through, and I don't know if everyone has had a chance, but I looked through, I like the ordinance as it's written in Broward, the requirements, but I want the threshold to be $1 million with 12% participation by apprentices. And I appreciate the enforcement. I think it's pretty well-defined, the enforcement part of the Tampa ordinance. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to move it forward as this, and I will turn the gavel at this point virtually over to Commissioner Overman.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. We have a motion.
Second, from Commissioner Smith.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, we have a second by Commissioner Smith. I don't see any hands raised at this point. Let me make sure.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, I do, actually.
Commissioner White has his hand? I'm sorry, and he also, I know, had wanted to talk about.
Right. And Commissioner Myers, do you have your hand raised, or is that from prior? Okay.
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. While I recognize that G1 and G2 are different, I also want to acknowledge the fact that we need to be careful to not bite off more than we can chew with some major initiatives. I do want to congratulate Commissioner Myers on seeing her initiative through on what was a unanimous vote, if I recall correctly. But, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the proposals in G2. As I mentioned, we just, we want to be careful to not bite off more than we can chew here. There is a similar ordinance, as I understand it, in Pinellas County that's the subject of litigation. We don't know how that's going to play out. I also understand there have been some bills filed in Tallahassee related to this issue, so I just don't know that, certainly, the bulk of the initiatives contemplated in G2 are really ready for prime time at this point. I think it's certainly something that would be worthy of revisiting in a few months, certainly after the legislative session, and once we've, I hope, had a chance to see how things over in Pinellas play out. I also understand from the industry that oftentimes, these apprenticeship programs just aren't in place because they're just having difficulty finding the people to fill the apprenticeship slots. I know it's something that the industry's been working on for decades, but, you know, it's going to take more time to build that momentum as we head in that direction. So for all of those reasons, at this time, I would offer a substitute motion that we accept the report for Item G2, but not take any further action at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner White. I think I heard a second by Commissioner Hagan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a second by Commissioner Hagan. Any discussion to the substitute motion? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, well, I'm hoping for a deny on the substitute motion so that we can move this forward. It's very important that we get this here. We don't need to wait for Pinellas County to, whatever is going on over there has been going on for a while. But Broward has not been challenged, by the way, and is moving forward, and the other initiative was not even in Palm Beach that was originally brought up, was not even an ordinance, and has never, ever been used. So I think it's really important to move this forward, and yes, Tallahassee would preempt everything, if they ever could. Talk about states' rights. They don't have, they don't believe in home rule, that's for sure. But they, you know, just because Tallahassee might preempt it is not a good reason not to go forward with it. They've certainly preempted a lot of really important initiatives, and so I'd like to make sure we move this forward after this vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yeah, just to address a couple of points that were.
To the substitute motion, correct?
That's right. My goodness, this is the second time today we're making a substitute motion that is the exact opposite of the motion on the floor, and I think we might want to visit Robert's rules when we look at our board policies. But, you know, I just want to tell you that I have toured some of our apprenticeship programs provided by the Building Trades Organized Labor, and I am mightily impressed, and I think it's really important that this county encourages and supports those programs for the very same reasons that everyone was so enthusiastic about encouraging and supporting Item G1. We need to do whatever we can to encourage and support these state-certified, Department of Education-sanctioned apprenticeship programs that are supported by our local building trades unions. For any of you who have not toured, say, the apprenticeship program at the Ironworkers, it's amazing, and all of these programs are really astounding, and they provide more than a simple training or mentorship program even, like we're considering with the ACE program. They provide a career pathway that gives people a lifelong career of supporting a family in our community as an alternative to any other college education path with good salaries, good benefits, good wages. And so for all the reasons we would have, we are moving to support G1, I think we should take the steps that other municipalities are taking to support these apprenticeship programs in our community. As far as the lawsuits, I've discussed those with our county attorneys and understand that they are, you know, everybody, anybody can sue for anything, and these lawsuits, I don't think are anything we need to worry about. Our county can defend against something like this. And finally, the point that was raised about whether or not we have enough of a workforce in our county to meet the 12% requirement for county jobs, and this is just for our own county contracts, our own procurement department, to lead by example there. I would point out that the ordinance includes language that says we are only requiring the procurements to show a good-faith effort to fulfill that 12% from our local apprenticeship programs. If they are not available and they cannot fill the 12%, there is no punishment, or they don't lose their procurement. So just to be clear, it's, we won't miss out on any construction procurements if the workforce is not available. workforce is not available to satisfy that requirement, as long as the applicant is making, can show they're making a good-faith effort to hire from our local apprenticeship programs. And so I'm strongly in support of this and will not be voting for the substitute motion. I hope that that will be disposed of, and we can move on to support the main motion on the floor as made by our Chair, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Myers, I see your hand is raised. Are you interested in piping in on the substitute motion?
Yeah, just one.
Can I hear you? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're recognized.
Just one quick question. As it was stated regarding what the legislature plans to do, if we vote for this today and then they, the legislature come out with something that would take effect in July, then we just remove our program completely since this is a county-owned project? That's what I need clarification on.
Yes, Commissioner Myers, we don't know exactly how that bill will proceed through the legislature. Typically, it's common to have a start date or an effective date on the first day of July, but it's not always. They could make it a different date. The other thing is that it would preempt our program unless they had a grandfather clause or made some exception, but without being able to see the final product, we can't really say.
You hit the key for grandfather. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so before, I don't see any other hands raised, and I'd like to actually comment on the substitute motion, but as well as the issue. The issue is to receive a report and come back to create a program. And honestly, if we were always afraid of everything that the state's going to do, we would never do anything. And it's critically important that if this is the, if this is the goal of this body that is in the best interest of serving the citizens and the businesses of our community in creating job opportunities, good quality jobs, and making sure that we have the adequate workforce. What we heard earlier was that we've got a significant number of individuals in the building trades that are due to retire, and in order to sustain the economy that is dependent on these building trades, creating a robust program to allow for a business to participate in making sure they have well-trained employees is critically important to the success of our over-and-underlying economy. So I would actually, I'm going to vote against the substitute motion, but I do think this also is giving the staff an opportunity to come back with the program to address some of the concerns that we may have and things we've heard about the differences in the program for us to address and get it done. I'm about to get it done. And we'll have to deal with the issue associated with grandfathering or being preempted or home rule when we get there, but it does not prohibit us from addressing what's critically important to the success of our community as it continues to recover from not only the pandemic, but also the crisis among the young individuals that are looking for opportunity and direction in their life. With that, I will, Commissioner White, please restate your motion so it's very clear what this vote is.
It's to accept the report but to take no further action.
And we have a second by Commissioner Hagan. Please call the roll.
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion failed, five to two. Chair Kemp, Cohen, Myers, Overman, and Smith voted no.
And then to the original motion to receive the, Commissioner Kemp, would you like to restate your motion to make sure it's very clear?
Commissioner White's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought that was from Pryor. My apologies. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to place a second substitute motion on the floor, which would be to receive the report and adopt the Palm Beach model.
Any discussion regarding the substitute motion? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll just be quick. It's not even ordinance there. It's never been used. It's meaningless, and anyway, I'll be a no vote. And hopefully, we can move on to the original motion.
I don't see any other hands, but my comment to that respect is it sort of ties the staff's hot hands to create a robust, effective program. One model versus another is not a debate at the moment, to my opinion, so I believe the order, I mean, the motion is out of order. But for that being said, we can take a roll call vote on whether or not to limit the program creation to the Palm Beach model. Is that your motion, Commissioner White, for clarification?
Yes, that's the spirit of the motion.
Excellent. Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, seeing no other comments?
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion failed, two to five. Chair Kemp, Cohen, Myers, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Thank you. Motion fails. Commissioner White, your hand is still up.
I forgot to lower it, Madam Vice Chair. Lowering it right now.
Not a problem. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I didn't not address you. And now we will take a vote on the original motion, which is to receive the report from the county administration and the county attorney's office regarding the creation of a program to establish apprenticeship participation requirements. Is that accurate, Commissioner Kemp?
No, it's more than that. It's to do that, but as well, to create, to draft an ordinance that includes the, it's modeled after the Broward ordinance, but with a threshold of $1 million, a required participation by apprentices of 12%, and then to include the model after the enforcement, the very well-defined enforcement of the Tampa ordinance. And that was my motion.
You have a motion, and I believe Commissioner Smith, you were the second.
Second.
Okay. The only comment that I'll make as it relates to the motion, it's not going to change the motion, but I do want to suggest that I'm a carrots-versus-sticks kind of person. So in developing the framework of the program, I'd like to make sure that we look for opportunities such as the amount of retainage or the program that Mr. Hamilton referenced to, I see it may have been described a little differently, but where there is an opportunity for someone to actually benefit from participating in the program due to either retainage programs, but also to make sure that it's more than just a voluntary program. With that being said, unless there's other comments, we'll take the vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner White voted no.
Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And, yes, and Commissioner Cohen?
I apologize, but my iPad is not working, and so I was.
I've had that, I've had to shake it before.
I was attempting to make a comment, and I just, I'll make it now.
Not a problem.
So I'm happy to move this forward and get this discussion going, but like everything else, the devil's going to be in the details, and I hope that when it comes back, we can spend some time really scrutinizing the language, understanding what we're doing. And if, to Commissioner Overman's point, if there are things that can be done that are incentivize, that incentivize programs rather than are punitive in nature, we might want to look at adding that to make the ordinance stronger. I think it's fine. We'll start with Broward, but, you know, we can, we can look at everything and, you know, see where we end up. But congratulations on moving this forward.
Thank you. And I think it's, you know, we can have that discussion later, but I think it's a good, strong ordinance and what the incentives or, that they refer to in Palm Beach is not part of any ordinance and has never been used, apparently. So it hasn't really accomplished what, you know, what has been valuable to bring in the apprentices. So with that being said, though, I'll move to Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item F2, and this is Commissioner Overman's item, and it is a presentation. I believe that we have several on the line for the presentation.
Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I was ready to go.
Okay. Sorry.
This item is to receive a presentation by Sarah Koutour regarding the fees and fines Justice Centers and the approval of a resolution supporting the passage of House Bill 557 and its companion Senate Bill 386, which seeks to modernize Florida's fines and fee structure while providing for consistent and reasonable payment plan options to ensure ex-offenders can successfully reintegrate into society and meet financial obligations. I'm going to keep this really brief because we have several, hopefully, still on the line, distinguished guests that would like to speak to this item today. With that, I did invite State Attorney Andrew Warren, but I believe he had a conflict that was not going to allow him to stay on the call, and I do not see him present. Is he still, is he back maybe by this point or available to speak?
Commissioner Overman, this is Julie Holt. I have texted Mr. Warren to let him know that this item is starting now, and he is going to attempt to jump on.
Excellent. Excellent. With that, until he is able to return possibly, I've also invited Public Defender Holt, and I'd like to invite you for some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Ms. Wise, I would, I'm going to be very brief because Sarah's presentation, I think, is going to be very good and illuminate what the situation is. And I testified last year in front of the Board of County Commission, and although we have some new members, both of those individuals are very familiar with this particular issue. And so for me, I just want to urge the Board of County Commission to support the two respective bills. As all of you know, as the public defender here in Hillsborough County, our office represents individuals that are indigent and individuals that are charged with criminal offenses. And quite often, those criminal offenses are in the arena of having situations where their financial or their lack of financial abilities has impacted their life. Last year, as we were working through the Amendment Four situation, I literally was able to sit through court dockets and really observe the impact that suspensions and the impact that fines and fees and the way that they're structured actually impact people's lives and how, for the majority of the clients that I represented, the ability to enter into a reasonable financial payment plan and something that they could actually move towards achieving the satisfaction of what they consider to be their financial obligations is significantly difficult on their part. I am proud that Hillsborough County and the Clerk's, Clerk of Court Office has taken a position in this particular area, which is, I think, very supportive and very easily recognizing the challenges that people have in this particular area. So, and I know that Ms. Stewart is on, Mr. Warren has texted me and indicated that he is also on, and he'll talk to you a little bit about his position as it relates to these matters. But I would urge the Board to strongly support both of these respective bills and also to continue to allow us to work together within this community and with our Clerk of Court, Ms. Stewart, in order to ensure that my clients that are indigent actually have an ability to, number one, pay their debt to society, and, number two, do so in a reasonable manner so that we don't have the types of situations that we do in the courtroom with these financial obligations. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Commissioner Overman, thank you for, again, spearheading this issue on behalf of individuals that really are meritorious, having an opportunity to become successful members of our society.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I just wondered if, I'm sorry to, if Andrew Warren is on at this time?
State Attorney Andrew Warren is present, and I'd like to invite him to offer some testimony. We have, after that, our Clerk's Office, Cindy Stewart is available to speak, and then I'll do a brief introduction to Ms. Koutour following their offer of support.
So we, Andrew Warren, at this time? You're recognized?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioner Overman. I'll be brief. I had the opportunity to speak to the Commission last year about fines and fees and the work that we have done in the State Attorney's Office, and I don't want to be redundant from what I said, to what I said last year, but would just like to remind the Commission of how we appreciate, they're taking the time to learn more and support this issue. We have worked tirelessly to reduce the criminalization of poverty that we see every day in the criminal justice system. It is a conversation that Public Defender Holt and I have on a regular basis. It is one for which there are not a lot of great solutions in the criminal justice system. We do what we can from the prosecutor's side to try to minimize the poverty traps that ensnare people in a costly and difficult criminal justice system because they are frankly unable to satisfy the financial obligations in their lives. As I think you're going to hear from the Funds and Fees Center, from Sarah, we have about a million suspensions in the state of Florida. 70% of those are for financial-based reasons. Very few deal with traffic safety. These laws are ineffective. They don't make people pay. They merely clog our criminal justice system and make it harder for people to get out from under the thumb of criminal justice, to get back to their lives where they can put food on the table and pay their rent and provide for their children. So anything we can do to minimize this criminalization of poverty, to simplify payment plans for people who have driver's license suspensions, helps to mitigate those cycles of poverty that we see exacerbated in the criminal justice system. As I've said before to the Commission, smart justice is all about finding solutions. This is a problem that we can solve, and as with the public defender, I urge the Commission, again, to support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here today. I truly appreciate your comments and your continued support on this very, very important issue. And as with any initiative or any resolution or any bill that comes forward, it's important that we have partners that are all on board. And with that, I'd like to ask Clerk Stewart if she would like to offer any, answer any questions or confirm your position on support for the proposed resolution as well as the bills at the state level.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. I appreciate the time. I'll be really brief. I know Sarah is going to do a really, a great job of presenting the actual position here. I support my colleagues. We, I have been briefed on what it is that we do, but I know that Andrew and Julie and I have had these conversations before about the heavy lift that it is for people coming into the criminal justice system to pay their financial obligations, especially these that are non-traffic-related and felony misdemeanor cases. So historically, we've, we've never done this. It's not statutorily mandated, so I am happy to continue to support the work that is moving forward, and I, with them, also urge you to support this legislation. My office will continue to do the same.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much, and I appreciate it. You know, it takes a team, and so I'm glad to see that everybody's on board. Oh, in 2019, over 2 million individuals could not legally drive in Florida because of a suspended. a team, and so I'm glad to see that everybody's on board. Oh, in 2019, over 2 million individuals could not legally drive in Florida because of a suspended driver's license. And I believe in the draft of a solution for the Board to consider had 1.6 million rather than the 2 million, so we could possibly make a correction due to describener's error. But in Hillsborough County, 75%, 75% of all driver's license suspensions in 2019 were due to the failure to pay the fines and fees, while only 2.3% were due to dangerous driving. The data backs up that shows that these policies disproportionately affect low-income people as well as people of color. And so it's critically important that when we, when we want people to be successful at rehabilitation or doing the right thing, the last thing we want to do is keep them from being able to support themselves or their families because they're not able to drive. And so with that, I went to one, thank the distinguished speakers that joined us today for everything you're doing for Hillsborough County. And the, these bills that we would support will go a long way to make it easier for Floridians to get to work, take care of their families, and pay their debts. Ms. Couture, with the Justice Center, with the Fines and Fees Center, I believe HTV will be sharing your presentation. And with Ms. Sarah Couture, please feel free to proceed with the presentation.
Thank you for inviting me back to be Commissioner Overman. As it's been stated, my name's Sarah Couture, and I'm the Florida State Deputy Director for the Fines and Fees Justice Center, and I'm also a Hillsborough County resident. Next slide, please. The Fines and Fees Justice Center is a national nonprofit, and our mission is to create a justice system that treats individuals fairly, ensures public safety and community prosperity, and is funded equitably. Next slide, please. I'm here today to highlight Florida's counterproductive practice with suspending driver's licenses for unpaid court debt and what we see as a solution to the problem. This short video will highlight those problems for you.
I'd like you to meet my friend Anthony.
Hi.
Anthony's a great worker, and he loves his job. But he has a court fine, and he's been trying to put together enough money to pay it off. It's not easy. You do want to pay the fine, right?
Of course I do.
It's been hard. Anthony's the sole provider for his family. He works long hours. Between food, rent, and bills, there isn't any extra money. Last month, Anthony didn't have enough to make his payment, so Florida suspended his driver's license.
How am I supposed to drive to work?
Here's the problem. In Florida, if you're late paying your fines and fees, your driver's license is suspended. I know what you're thinking. That makes no sense. If you lose your license, how can you get to work? If you can't get to work, how can you make money to pay the fine?
Exactly.
Suspension laws cause the state to lose money, businesses to lose their employees, and everyday Floridians to lose their jobs. Why are we still doing this?
Don't they want me to go to work?
Having the freedom to support yourself and your family shouldn't be up for debate. It should be obvious. Ending license suspensions. It's good for business. It's good for the government. It's good for Florida.
Let's get Florida back to work. Stop suspending driver's licenses for court debt.
I'd like you to-
So as you can see on this next slide, in 2019, as Commissioner Overman alluded to, over 1.2 million suspensions, making up 72% of all the suspension notices issued that year, were for unpaid fines and fees, not for dangerous driving or public safety concerns. I'd also like to highlight that that number does not include the failure to pay child support. That is its own category with 178-ish thousand. Next slide. If you look at the comparison of counties here, you can see where Hillsborough ranks. It's important to note, again, it's already been mentioned, that the Hillsborough County Clerk does not suspend for unpaid criminal traffic court debt. Or they, they don't suspend for unpaid criminal court debt. They only suspend for criminal traffic. They interpret the statute that they're not required to, and we often use Hillsborough County as an example to other clerks when we speak to them about measures that they can take within the confines of current statute as well as the Constitution. Next slide, please. In 2017, in response to a public records request, the Clerk's Office provided address labeled data. We had a student that was working with us that was able to take that and compare it with 2010 census data to show that the highest rates of suspension tend to correlate with the highest poverty rate as well as those zip codes that have the highest percentages of people of color living in them. So zip code 33610 was the highest suspension notice rate that year, which consists of District 3 and a small portion of District 2. Second was zip code 33612, which is District 3 as well. Next slide, please. So the impact of jobs suspension, 83.7% of jobs in Tampa Bay would require three hours of daily commuting using public transportation. There was a study done that showed this. That does include Tampa Bay in the study, includes Tampa, Clearwater, and CP. Thirty percent of jobs nationwide require the use of a vehicle during work, and more and more job applications require a driver's license just to even be considered. Additionally, it limits the access to health care, especially right now, such as COVID testing. It creates challenges for parents to get their children to school, and those kids need a medical appointment as well. Next slide, please. So what are the solutions? We have HB 557, which is sponsored by Representative Lamarcus from Broward County this year, as well as its companion Senate Bill 386, sponsored by Tom Wright from Moots Marina Beach. So what it does is it ends driver's license suspensions for the unpaid criminal court debt, and it creates a statewide uniform regional payment plan. These bills are designed to keep Floridians working and to provide them a path to pay their debt. They're about accountability and compliance and also about increasing collections for the clerk. To that point, a study in California showed that the year after they gave people their licenses back and gave them affordable payment plans, on-time collections rose 8.9% without the use of those driver's license suspensions. Next slide. Since 2017, 13 states and Washington, DC have all passed reforms to curb the practice of suspending licenses for unpaid court debt. You can see, even Mississippi, our neighbors to the north, have done it. And so we're hoping that Florida will join this graphic this year. Next slide, please. This is our list of supporters. We have a wide bipartisan group of supporters. We have the Tampa Bay Rays and the Tampa Bay Rowdies, Fresh Force, which is a program of Feeding Tampa Bay that works on workforce development. They are one of our supporters. And recently, the Miami-Dade County Commission passed a resolution in support of these bills. I'd like to thank public defender Julie Holt, State Attorney Andrew Warren, and Clerk Cindy Stewart for all being present today and speaking about their support for these bills and this resolution as well. Next slide. I'd like to close by thanking all of you for allowing me to present again this year, and we ask that you consider joining the list of supporters again to end this practice. We appreciated the support that we received in Palahasi last year from Hillsborough County very much, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. I appreciate that report. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, if it's-
You're recognized.
Thank you very much. I move that we received the presentation by Sarah Couture in the Fines and Fees Justice Center and approve a resolution supporting the passage of House Bill 557 and its companion Senate Bill 386, which seeks to modernize Florida's fine and fee structure, providing for consistent and reasonable payment plan options to ensure ex-offenders can successfully re-integrate into society and meet their financial obligations. Second, Commissioner Smith.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and I'm just going to look here to see if we have any further, I don't see, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I think that this is awesome, that we are able to weigh in in support of this, and thank you, Commissioner Overman, for bringing this forward. This is a serious, serious problem, and it belies a larger problem, which is that our state does not adequately fund our court system, and it doesn't adequately fund the clerks. And it looks for ways to pay for these things on the backs of poor people rather than actually appropriating the money that our criminal justice system needs in order to work properly. So I'm very much in support of it. I hope, however, that one day our legislature will actually take the necessary steps to take this burden off of us. Because at the end of the day, the money that we subsidize the court system with, and I know we're all happy to do it because we have to do it for public safety, but it really is the state's responsibility, and it's one that they've shirked for many, many years, and they've passed it off to the people that can least afford it.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to comment at this time? I would just like to say thank you, Commissioner Overman, for bringing this forward. I've been familiar and sometimes steeped in this as well for some time, but honestly, I still find 70% of those that have been tangled or had their license pulled are simply for not paying. And I think Andrew Warren said it well when he said criminalization of poverty or just criminalization of stressed families and low-income people. And we all know extraordinarily well what it's like if you can't drive a car in Hillsborough County. That is just, you know, and obviously can't go to work and can't do other things. It's a terrible burden. And I know for, you know, I've heard people say, oh, they got a de minimis fine, $220, or something like this, a ticket or something. And I think for a whole lot of people, that is, you know, can be a week of work. And it's just, it's just really important to support this. So thank you, Commissioner Overman. And with that, we will move forward to a roll call. I don't see any other comments.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Hagan's item regarding cybersecurity.
You're recognized, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be brief. On Friday, February 5th, the water treatment system for the neighboring city of Oldsmar was hacked, and controls were accessed that could have compromised the city's water supply, and as a result jeopardized the health and safety of residents. News reports credit the swift action of an attentive operator that averted any direct threat. A real and potentially harmful public emergency was avoided. Law enforcement is investigating, but so far it's unknown if the source of the infiltration was local, national, or international. The objective of the attack was to manipulate the level of sodium hydroxide. Whether motivated by malice or merely mischief, the breach was real, and a vulnerability was exploited. There's no greater responsibility or higher priority of government than to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. The event in Oldsmar was not an isolated one. Governments across the country at all levels are cognizant of the threat and are actively involved in finding and sealing potential access points. Last year, Hillsborough County, with the help of expert consultants, embarked on a broad-ranging analysis of our systems. It's my understanding that as a result, an extensive action plan was or is being implemented. While I completely understand and appreciate that much of the report and corrective plan must remain confidential, I do feel that it's our duty to assure our residents that their key government systems and infrastructure is safe and under a watchful eye. I'm aware that the county administrator and her staff will be holding confidential briefings with commissioners over the next few weeks. However, at the same time, I feel strongly we must also seek to reassure the public. Therefore, the motion I'd like to make is just direct the administrator to bring back a report on the cybersecurity assessment that the county conducted last year, as well as the status of the action plan generated by that analysis. I understand and agree that the discussion will be limited, given the sensitive nature of the information, but I am confident that the report can be sufficient and encouraging without revealing any confidential information. So-
Second.
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and I don't believe I see Commissioner Cohen. Do you, you don't have your hand up?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Seeing no further discussion at this time, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, board members.
Ms. Wise?
Very good. Thank you. We'll go back to the regular agenda and move to item B2 regarding the Housing Finance Authority and Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds. Mary Helen Ferris from the County Attorney's Office will present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. This is an item to adopt a resolution approved by the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds for the Boulevard Tower IV and Boulevard Villas in an aggregate face amount not to exceed $36,500,000. The developments will be located on West Chestnut Street. As a way of background, the Board approved this transaction back in October. After that, HUD is requiring the developer to have many three- and four-bedroom units. The developer did not want to put these large income-eligible families in the tower, so about .2 miles away from the tower, they're going to construct Boulevard Villas, which will be more in line with the townhouse-type development, which would be better for the income-eligible, larger families. There's no county finances involved, and I would ask for your approval.
Move approval.
Yay!
Second.
Commissioner Overman and moved approval, and I'm not sure who said second. Commissioner Myers, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. I'm seeing no further comments. Can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular item is item B3. This is relating to our Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP, as we're calling it. And Scott Stromer will present this item. This is related to item G3, where Audrey Ziegler will speak more in detail about the program.
Good afternoon. This is Scott Stromer with Procurement Services. Item B3 is asking the Board to authorize the emergency procurement of services from Ernst &amp; Young, LLC, for the immediate enablement of an online application portal that will be used to administer the emergency rental assistance program in direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic and associated declaration at a total cost of $1,781,000. On January 19th, 2021, the county received approximately $32.4 million of rental assistance funding from the U.S. Treasury. And every effort is being paid by Audrey Ziegler, key stakeholders, and extraordinary staff in the Social Services Department to expedite the disbursement of this critical assistance to eligible residents. These funds are designed to alleviate an immediate and impending threat to the welfare of our most vulnerable residents at times of the essence. Therefore, an emergency procurement of the subject services is recommended. Ernst &amp; Young developed the county's successful application portal for the small business housing utility assistance programs, which were funded through the Corona Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES Act in 2020. Given the urgent need to get these funds to the hands of those who need it, Ernst &amp; Young is the only reasonable source capable of developing and standing up a solution by the Social Services Department's target launch date of March 9th, 2021, that is consistent and similar to the portal used by our residents in 2020. A few key points on this program. The rental assistance program is different than the housing utility and financial assistance program from last year. This new program is focused on rent assistance rather than being a subset of another assistance program. The new program requires the registration of landlords so that the tenants' applications can be- so that the tenants' applications can be linked for the purpose of verification and transparency across both groups. Continuing with Ernst &amp; Young allows a tenant application process to largely mirror last year's process, which helps keep the experience familiar and consistent for residents. The new program actively engages landlords to help facilitate the process and help build effective partnerships with tenants. Local governments with populations of at least 200,000, populations of at least 200,000 receive funding for this program. The county received approximately $32.4 million, and the city of Tampa received $12 million. These funds will remain available through December 31st, 2021, but the Treasury will begin to recapture and reallocate those funds beginning September 30th, 2021, if the recipient local governments have not expended their allocations. This is the, this, it is this timeline that is driving, that is driving the expedited nature of this procurement of services from Ernst &amp; Young. 90% of the funds must be used for shelter and/or utility expenses explicitly linked to housing stability services for eligible households. The remaining 10% of the funds may be used to cover administrative expenses that are needed to effectively and properly distribute the funding. Funds must be used for renter households with incomes of no more than 80% of area median income, or AMI, and meet the conditions related to employment status, economic impact, risk of experience in homelessness, or housing instability, and several other key factors. Priority will be given to households with incomes of no more than 50% AMI, in which one or more family members are unemployed for at least 90 days. Under this new program, payments covering no more than 12 months of assistance must be made directly to landlords and utility providers rather than the individuals, unless the landlord or utility provider has been directly contacted and refuses to participate. As the county administrator said, more information on this program and other activities associated with the county's response to the pandemic will be covered later in the agenda, specifically Item G3. With regard to Item B3, Procurement Services Department does recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item F1. Commissioner Kemp, your item regarding the Rules of Order Review Committee.
Yes. And as this states, the Board of County Commissioners has a policy that there's a Rules of Order Committee pursuant to Rule 2 of the Board Policy, that we meet three months after every election to review the rules of order. And I, it's pretty simple and clear-cut. I, myself, was on this the last time. It can have one person or multiple people. I want to serve on it, or serve on this committee, but it's open to any other commissioners who would like to be part of it. It's just a, it's, you know, maybe two meetings or something like that. And I don't know if you'd like to add more, Ms. Beck?
No, Commissioner. It's just a committee that includes a representative of the clerk and a representative of the county administration. Legal provides legal guidance, and it's simply an opportunity to see if there's any tweaks needed for your rules.
I nominate Commissioner Kemp.
And...
That's fine.
Yeah.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Will you just come back to us with whatever the committee decides?
Yeah, everything comes, right. If any changes come back, but anybody's welcome to serve on it. It's just that they, you know, they put it in sunshine.
Right, right.
Otherwise, but it's not a problem with me. I just, I know I want to, but thank you. So I guess having that, I don't even think we need to take a vote or anything. We're just announcing that we're doing it and that it was open to anybody. And with that, Ms. Wise, we'll move on.
Very good, thank you. The next item is Commissioner White's item, Item F3, Regarding the Miracles Outreaches Appropriations Request, and support of that item.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My item's straightforward. We all know who Miracles Outreach is, and I'm asking for support of a state appropriation, no county funds. So I move to approve for the chair's signature on the attached letter of support for Miracles Outreach Appropriations Request in House Bill 2883.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no further discussion, I don't think. Let's have a roll call.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The last item is Item G3, which is the COVID-19 Programs and Activities Report. Tom Fessler will give us the very speedy version, and then Audrey will take it over and talk about our rental assistance program.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. This afternoon, I just wanted to, as I have done in previous reports, just kind of give you a snapshot of changes since the last report. Since the last report, the total expenditures that we have have increased from $235 million up to $238 million. We have an original award of $256 million from the, under the CARES Act. So we have expended about 93%. We have about 7% left to spend. We do anticipate spending about another $9 million by the end of March, which would leave us with approximately $9 or $10 million of funding to meet any additional needs that come up throughout the rest of this calendar year. As far as other expenditures that are reimbursable through the FEMA process, we have about $34.8 million in expenditures that we're going to be submitting to FEMA for reimbursement. As I pointed out at the last meeting, I believe, recent legislation from the federal government now provides for 100% reimbursement as opposed to typically, we would be responsible for about 12.5% at the local level, but now we can submit for 100% reimbursement. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Audrey Ziegler. Audrey, this afternoon is going to cover for you kind of where we are progress-wise as it relates to the new stimulus money that has been allocated to us, which is $34 million to Hillsborough County for emergency rental assistance, and also about $12 million to the city of Tampa. And with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey.
Good afternoon. Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. And I hope you can hear me. I had a little bit of audio trouble earlier today. But thank you for adding us to the agenda. I know a lot of people are eager to hear about this program and how it's shaping up. But before we move on to the next slide, I just want to take a moment and let you know that since we found out about receiving this program funding, Rob Hendrickson and I, and Rob is with the Management and Budget Department, we have met with so many people and gotten the ball rolling to have a very successful program. But I would like to just let you know all the people that have been involved so far. Of course, our county administrator, Ms. Wise, we've had several meetings with her, Tom Fessler, Tara Harness, Ron Barton, the city of Tampa, Ernst &amp; Young, of course procurement, you could hear Scott Stromer, how versed he is in our program, and he gives credit to Social Services, but he did a heck of a lot of work on that item. The clerk's office, the county attorney's office, human resources, communications department, affordable housing, Commissioner Overman and her staff, Career Source, landlord associations, and children's board. And those are just to name a few that we started with. So we've been very busy, and today I'm just going to give you an overview of where we are and what the funding is intended for. But further down the line, when we're ready to launch the program, we'll have more details for you. Thank you, Tom. I'm ready. So the Emergency Rental Assistance Program overview, as Tom mentioned, a part of the Funding Appropriations Act of 2021. The emergency program made available $25 billion to assist households that are unable to pay rent or utilities due to the pandemic. Local governments with populations of at 200,000 received the funding, and the county here in Hillsborough has received $32.4 million, with the city of Tampa receiving their own allocation of $12 million. Funds will remain available through December, but the Treasury will begin repatching and reallocating funds starting in September. So it'll be critical that we utilize our funding as much as possible by September, so hopefully we can be in receipt of some of the additional reallocations as they become available. For the guidelines that we're looking at for the program, the guidelines show us that 90% of the funds must be used for shelter or utility expenses, and those are linked to housing stability services for the eligible households, with 10% of the funds being able to be used to cover our administrative expenses. The funds must be used for renter households with incomes no more than 80% of area median income, meeting the conditions related to their employment status, economic impact, risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability, and several other key factors, with a note that a priority access will be provided to households with an income at or below 50% AMI, which is one or more family members being unemployed over 90 days. And I'm sorry, that's "and" in addition to the 50% AMI. One thing I'd like to highlight here, this program does not allow us to pay for mortgages, so that it's exclusive to people with an active lease that are renters. Payments covering no more than 12% of assistance must be made directly to the landlords or the utility companies as opposed to the individuals. And there is one caveat in the program, and I think it's mentioned on another slide, where if the landlord refuses to work with the county to accept the payment, we do have the option to make the payment directly to the tenant. So the design of, the objective of the, sorry. The design objectives that we've been working on, that I mentioned with all those partners so far, are high-level summarized here. We'll be dedicating funding to shelter assistance to foster the housing stability and avoid evictions. We'll be paying landlords rental arrears up to $5,000 per household, allowing us to assist almost 10,000 residents. One of the things I want to mention for this vote is we are open to discussion on considering expanding that threshold to be about $5,000 per household. We'll do the, we're developing an outreach plan with the communications department to promote the program with faith-based organizations, nonprofit social services providers, minority radio stations, and publications. And I believe we're already scheduled to be on one radio station this Saturday. We'll prioritize access to those applying that are most in need, which I mentioned with the 50% area median income being our first threshold and below. And we're looking at opening the program out county-wide. We're engaging the landlord associations and those communities to increase their buy-in and hoping that they do participate with the program this time as a vendor. We're making the application process as simple as we possibly can, user-friendly, and we'll have ample call center support on hand. I believe there's upwards of 80 call center reps that will be available this time around. We're collecting, we'll be making it easy for applicants to collect their necessary documents to enable them to have a really good application at its first submission so that we can determine their income eligibility and when they've been impacted by COVID, and issue those payments as expeditiously as possible. We'll build our own, our, build our own, I'm sorry, I can't read today. Build our online system to establish transparency and trust between landlords and their tenants, especially as it concerns the application of award benefits or past due obligations. And of course, we're looking to obtain eviction forbearances from landlords who are receiving payments, because we know overall that is the intent of the overall funding of this program. And the last slide we have today just shows you where we are in our planning efforts. The social services team will take the lead for this effort. We'll be conducting all of the application eligibility reviews, and we'll be determining the benefit amount, and we'll also be working with the clerk's office to issue those benefits. We're in negotiations almost daily, or almost all day daily, with Ernst &amp; Young, so that we can modify and reuse the same application that Mr. Stromer mentioned. And we'll be able to secure the call center support for the duration of the program. We are partnering with the city of Tampa this go-around, so the funding that was allocated to them will be issued in parallel or in tandem with the county, so this will be seamless approach to all of our residents. We're aiming for mid-March program launch, and I know Mr. Stromer mentioned March 9th. March 9th will be dedicated for all the landlords in the community to register to be a vendor of the program, and then tenant applications and eligibility will follow shortly after that. The team will be providing regular updates to this group as part of their VOCC meetings, just as we have been since we had the first batch of fund. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. And, oops. Sorry, I'm looking, trying to bring up my screen here. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to tell, you know, share with the commissioners, the amount of work that the staff has put together in working across all the silos to get this done, as well as using a familiar platform for residents and landlords to participate in this program was critical to the success of being able to utilize these funds within the deadline and make adjustments to the changes in the programs as they occurred this year. So I am, I am, you know, so pleased and so impressed with our staff being able to address these issues in an important manner. It also reiterates what we heard earlier about possibly establishing a landlord registry that would allow us to effectively communicate with landlords that may be interested in this program. We know who they are, we can communicate with them, so that there's merit in actually creating that registry program. But we're already reaching out to landlords that may have tenants that are in need of support. So there's, there's common goals in moving this forward. So I very much want to make a motion to receive the report and again, thank the staff for all the robust work that's being done. Our offices, as Ms. Ziegler mentioned, speak with them daily, and they've been just absolutely stellar in making sure that we're taking good care of those citizens that are in crisis as a consequence of this, the pandemic experience that they are, they're going through. And thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
And I'll have a future discussion that's related to this issue afterwards. Thank you.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a commission, a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner White. Just, I think I could speak for all the commissioners how proud we are of the staff and how well this money has been dealt with, and how complicated with the deadlines, and have utmost trust in the programs that the county has established and worked on. So that's to the staff from the commissioners. And with that, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner White. And can you have a roll call, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioners, for your kind words. The word of the day, I think, is teamwork, and this really demonstrates that. Thank you. And I think the final item are future discussion items.
Thank you. Future discussion items, I know that Commissioner Cohen has said, I don't know if it's in the vein of future discussion items, but you wanted to, you had a comment to me?
Yeah, if you'll just permit me a moment of personal privilege. I have, I have two ruptured discs in my neck, and I have to have an operation, which I certainly hope and expect will fix it, but it will require me being out at least for a little while. And I just wanted to inform everyone, I will be doing this in writing, but that I won't be here on March 3rd. And at least after that, for a couple of weeks, I will probably need to be appearing virtually. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, because particularly with the odd quorum requirements that we have, I didn't want to have anyone caught off guard that that was my situation, and also wanted to just put everyone on notice about the next county commission meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're, I know you had mentioned that before, and we're all with you. We'll be praying with you and thinking and hoping you're coming back as quickly as possible and as little pain as possible. and as little pain as possible. So with that, are there any other... Commissioner White?
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen, I'll keep you in my prayers, and I'll certainly continue to contribute towards the in-person quorum. I had an email catch my eye this morning as the meeting was beginning from a constituent in Sun City Center that has run into some issues with irrigating their lawn using a pump that pumps water out of the pond that they live on. And it made me think back to a constituent issue that was brought to my attention a month or so back about someone who has been trying to irrigate with an irrigation well and has run into some issues with code enforcement. My understanding of our current watering restrictions is that it solely relates to the pressure issue in South County, that it's not related to obviously a drought or a water supply issue. So I'd like to ask if the county administrator can bring a report back to the next meeting that might detail possible solutions to the issue of people being visited by code enforcement when they're watering using, you know, a pond such as this constituent or something like an irrigation well.
Thank you. And I'll go to, at this point, I think these are all new hands. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, and I just want to mention that it's time for our planning commission staff to bring back a progress update about where we are in the 12-month comprehensive plan, work plan cycle, which we've just passed, as well as the upcoming work program for the next year. We had a 12-month work plan started just about one year ago, February, March, and I've been talking to Ms. Zornita about this, and she agrees it would be a good idea to bring this forward. So I just wanted to put that on the record here.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. Recently, I became aware of some communities across our state that have established a residential eviction mediation program. These programs can lead to cost savings as well as decreased caseloads on our already strained court dockets as other mediation programs we already have across the county. I'm going to ask that the staff bring back a report on the feasibility of creating such a program here in Hillsborough County. I know this effort will require buy-in from our many community stakeholders, such as the 13th Judicial Circuit, as well as the clerk of the court, but the intent is work collaboratively, collaboratively to implement the program. And the reason this came to my attention is there's much legislations that's being considered regarding the process of eviction that makes reference to whether or not a program has a mediation, you know, residential mediation program. And we don't currently have one in place, and we want to make sure that that's options available to us, so we need to investigate that. So I'd like to ask the staff to take a look at that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I have a couple of future items as well. And one future item is that I'd like to, staff to report back, I guess this would be the planning commission or the county attorney, about the right, we grant a ability here for privately initiated text amendments. And I'd like to look at ending that right to that. What it means is that any developer in Hillsborough County pays a fee, and they can put forward any amendment they want affecting anything and everything in the entire county. It's a, we do not, as Commissioners, have the power to do that, but they do, and use up all kinds of time and effort of both the staff, the planning commission, our time, and, you know, it just doesn't seem like that should be permitted here. And it's, I think it's not common, but I'm not even sure about that. I've kind of tried to search around a little bit. So I'd like to find out more about that and like to have a report back on that and looking at that situation because I think it hasn't led to very good things here in Hillsborough County as well. I was just struck by the fact that for the last 20 years or so of our comprehensive plan, we have permitted or guaranteed or put in our plan a promise to communities that they could have libraries, yet we had no mechanism for doing that at all as part of our comprehensive plan. And I was looking as well at other communities, and I think it would be a great idea. In fact, I'd like to see a lot of library, community areas that people could use, and I think especially this came to my attention during YMAMA. We have a community there that has little access to Wi-Fi and sometimes to any kind of laptops or computers, and I think it'd be very good to have a place like a library there and have place making and have smaller type of satellite libraries in our county instead of these big, huge areas that we've gone to that you now have to drive to. So I'm looking at, I'd like to have a report back, and I've looked at Manatee County and several other counties, and they have impact fees with regards to this. They're more like the impact fees for fire stations, but Manatee County has this now, and we should have had it as a mechanism for doing this if we put it in our comp plan. I was more than shocked to see it there. But impact fees for libraries, these are all things that are already ongoing on Manatee County and other counties. Libraries, community buildings, and for law enforcement to keep up with our growth and make sure that we, moving forward, can make sure that these kinds of facilities are available because we have the funds to fund it. So I'd like to have a report back on that and be looking at that. And with that said, I don't know that anybody else has anything? Okay, we stand adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. I really appreciate all the support.